Thank you. Thank you for joining us this afternoon for our work session. Before we get started, would you please join me in a word of prayer? Thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Nacogdoches and to remember we are stewards of that trust. Help us to listen with understanding, to act with character, and in our deliberations when making decisions that affect Nacogdoches now and for many years to come. Amen.
Amen.
So I'll now call the meeting of March 16th, 2021 to order. Would you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we are going to begin our work session with our Acting Police Chief Scott Weems, and we will hear his report, and then we will ask for public comment. Good afternoon.
Greetings, Mayor, Council members. I wanted to start out by saying, I know last month I provided y'all with the 2020 racial profiling report, along with a cover page for your review to give you plenty of time to come up with some questions to ask. And as you may know, this report is required by Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 2.132B7, which states that the chief administrator of the agency is required to give it to the governing body, which is y'all. And this report includes data analyzed by Dr. Alex Del Carmen, a criminal justice professor and racial profiling scholar at Tarleton State University. So, let's begin. All right, as you can see on the data, this is the first data sheet that covers the total number of stops this year. And this year with the COVID and several other attributes, we've got 5,361 compared to almost double or more than double last year. Because in the middle of the year, or in March, when this pandemic started, we decided to cut down on the amount of contacts made to help fight the COVID virus. So we were going to try to do our part, and that impacted us greatly. So with that, we also had a staffing shortage. We have been low, real low, in the number of officers we have right now, so that's kind of an impact also. And we've also had a crime rate increase. Quite sure y'all are aware that throughout the nation, everybody has. The violent crime is up, and we're not immune to that. So we had to concentrate a lot on trying to get that solved. So we had a few things that affected the crime rate, I mean, the statistics. Y'all got a copy of the demographics? All right, so when we break it down, I'm looking at, and I know y'all have already read it, but we have a higher percentage of contacts made on white individuals as there is compared to black or Hispanic, Asian, Pacific Islander, or Alaskan Native. And that coincides with the last five years, the same numbers that we've generated. It's the same percentages, basically, throughout the last five years, and I'll show you that in a slide later. And this breaks it down to gender. The reason for the stop is a violation of the law. We've had a violation of the law, pre-existing knowledge, moving traffic violations, and vehicle traffic violations. And then we get down to searches. Was a search conducted? Yes, we've had 205 for black violators, 72 for white violators, 48 for Hispanic, and lower numbers for the other two. And we'll get to the percentages there later on in the document. Contraband, they're broken down into contraband, probable cause, inventory, and then was contraband discovered? And 120 times yes on black, 38 times yes on white, and 20 times yes on Hispanic. And did they result in an arrest? Which all of them are low. As we go through, it breaks it down into drugs, weapons, currency, and alcohol, and then stolen property and other. So these are the different things that were found during the stops. And now it breaks it down, the Tier 2 data breaks it down even further into the result of the stop. Did you get a verbal warning, a written warning, a citation, a written warning and arrest, or a citation and arrest? Then we break it down to the arrests based on penal code violation, traffic law violation, city ordinance, outstanding warrant, and then it goes into was physical force used. And you can see we only had four occasions where there was physical force resulting in bodily injury. So on motor vehicle contacts, including tickets, citations, and warnings, here's the percentages. Of the percentages, there's a low number of the top two, and then black is 37%, white 43%, Hispanic or Latino 18%. Then you get into tickets or citations, again, low numbers on the first two. Black is 31%, white 44%, and Hispanic is 23%. And you get into the verbal warnings and written warnings, and they're kind of average. Now, this is where it gets difficult. We compare our motor vehicle contacts to the fair roads standard comparison, and what that is, is the number of residents here in the city of Nacogdoches that have access to vehicles. And that compares to the number of stops that we make. So when we do that, we're kind of setting a bar pretty high, because we've got Highway 59, this corridor we're out here, that we work all the time for drug couriers. And then we have the people that come in and out of the city, that live out of town, out of our actual city limits, but they go to school here, carry their kids here. And so we're kind of condensing it down to these are the people that we're counting as our baseline, but these are the people we're actually coming in contact with. So we're holding ourselves pretty high, as Dr. Del Carmen will tell you in his final summary. But we want to be transparent, and we still want to toe the bar. Searches and arrests. All right, on the searches, we search the top two very seldom, because there's always low numbers. Black, we search 62%, white 22%, Hispanic or Latino 14%. Consensual searches, now this is consensual, is, people ask for, we ask for consent, and we're granting consent to search the car, and sometimes that's based on things that we discover along the way. I can't tell you every stop, but I can tell you there's different reasons to ask for consent. So we get consent 53% of the time from black, and 23% of the time from white, and 21% of the time from Hispanic. And out of that, we make custody arrests, 53% of the time from black, 29% of the time from white, and 18% of the time from Hispanic or Latino. And of those searches, the contraband found, or evidence found, 67% of the time black, 21% of the time white, 11% of the time Hispanic or Latina. Contraband or evidence not found, 36 black, 44% white, 19% Hispanic. And then arrests, as a result, 53% black, 29% white, and 18% Hispanic. And these are the audits that we turn in. We have turned in data audits four times a year, January, April, August, and December. December is the annual. This is what Dr. Del Carmen produced for us, that you have a copy of. This is just kind of reinforcing what we've already went through. All right, so for the last five years plus 2020, here is a graph that shows that we're kind of keeping the numbers the same as comparison, as far as the percentages go. And the numbers are different, but the percentages are basically the same. Now, you see a jump in 2018. That's when we went to electronic ticket riders, and that was because that created automatic data entry far. So it was, as you know, human error sometimes comes into play, but with the Brazos system, it's easier to keep track of it. You don't have as many hands to go through, and so you see the result, we increased. So 2019, you see that we had 10,000. 2020, we had 5,300. So that's a result from what I explained earlier. Here's the checklist, and like I said, Dr. Del Carmen ran through the data, did the data for us. Dr. Del Carmen is renowned for the state of Texas. He helped the state of Texas with the Sandra Bland Act, drew up the new laws that required these agencies to start doing what they're supposed to do. We were already doing it. We've been using Dr. Del Carmen for, I think, four years now, and will continue. So with that being said, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's just say how many questions.
Well, so what we're going to do now is have public comment, and then we will get to council questions and comments. So is there anyone here that would like to comment on this report? Come forward. State your name and your address, please. How are you?
Thank you, I'm good. Thanks for...
Yeah, I'll come here. Thanks, sir.
All right, I did not spend a whole lot of time on this report.
Tim, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Thank you.
Tim Garrigan, County Road, let's see, 2091, number 623. Okay, there are, there are a lot of problems with Del Carmen's report. Maybe this will be better. With all due respect, I don't know who decides to choose Del Carmen for this stuff, but he's basically taking the statistics and trying to look at them in a way where they're going to show as little as possible that means anything. For instance, and I don't know how much he gets paid to do it, I bet you he's very rarely critical of any law enforcement agencies anywhere, and I'm guessing that's why he was chosen for this job. And frankly, that prevents the city and the police department from knowing where the weak points are, and that's, so I just urge people to exercise a little bit of scrutiny with Del Carmen. One of the first problems in his report, he says that the police only know somebody's race or ethnicity 12% of the time. Now, I know how windows work, and I can look through windows, and I usually can tell something about the people that I see. It's just not that hard. The police have a tradition of saying they cannot determine race or ethnicity, but we all know that windows work more than 12% of the time. We wouldn't be able to use them to drive if that weren't true. That's just a sign there's something funny going on here. Now, you know, there are records here, a lot of the raw figures, the counts, and the corresponding percentages are put together in a way that don't mean very much. First of all, it's very easy for these statistics, and I mean, you know, it's a result of legislation. A lot of these rules were made, I think, to keep law enforcement happy as much as for anything else. For instance, you know, they say that they audit these numbers. I've never heard how that's done. They never substantiate that in any way, but every police department I've ever seen, it used to be, they would always come up with racial profiling numbers that roughly matched census data. And Del Carmen's urging, they have in recent years shifted that to focusing on these fair roadways, because they've realized that the population in general is not the same as the population driving cars. But it's very easy, once you know what you're going to be compared to, it's very easy to just report numbers that correspond to that. And it doesn't tell you anything. It really doesn't. However, once they also report the race of the people that they're stopping, you can compare how the people are treated after they get stopped. And one of the most glaring things, and this has been true for as long as I've looked at these reports, I think I came here two years ago and told you roughly the same thing about the 2019 profiling report, and now it's saying, or maybe it was the 2018 one, but last year's was the same, and this one is the same. There are, let's see, out of 332 searches, you would expect, you know, you would expect those to correspond with the proportion of whites and non-whites being stopped by the police. Well, it's not working out that way at all. For some reason, only 3.1% of the whites being stopped get searched. The police only select 3.1% of the whites to get searched, and we don't know how they're making that decision. None of this will tell you that, but it corresponds to race pretty strongly. Over 10% of blacks are searched. That is, you know, it's about three times as much, more than, a black person is more than 300% as likely to be selected for a search during a Nacogdoches traffic stop as is a white person, if I said that right. The black people are three times more likely to be searched, and nobody has ever explained that to me. And this is not, I've been raising that issue for years here. Del Carmen doesn't mention it. He doesn't want you to know about the selection rates. He wants you to know about percentages and raw counts that don't really mean anything. But, and there are other things consistent with that. Of the 45 arrests that they list here, blacks are twice as likely as whites to be selected to be arrested. We have no idea why. All four of the people that the police chief mentioned, they used physical force four times and injured people. None of those were white people. Doesn't happen to white people. Happens to black people and brown people. Somebody needs to be looking at that stuff, and I don't get the impression that anybody is. Now, I'll be happy to go through these numbers in more detail if anybody is interested in listening to me. I don't want to waste anybody's time, especially my own, you know. And there are some other things. One of the, one of the numbers that I think Del Carmen would probably take some comfort in is that the contraband, at least the way the report's written now, it used to be pretty clear that contraband was found pretty much equally among whites and non-whites. There was no difference. So that prevented somebody from justifying the selection of minorities to be searched more often based on some knowledge of their criminal behavior, somehow associating that with race. They've changed that this year, and they don't really do it based on selection. They just talk about the fact that there are, you know, 38 whites where there were contrabands selected, 120 blacks. Oddly enough, that corresponds pretty closely to the selection rates, the 300% difference, the, you know, the greater number of blacks with, you know, that are being found with contraband. It's because they're 300% is likely to get searched. You've got to look more closely at these numbers than I get the impression that anybody is doing. And someday I'm going to come back here, and I'm going to want to ask, you know, I came in two years ago and reported the same thing. Can anybody tell me what, if anything, the city has done to address it? I'm not really hearing much, and I'm not surprised. These, you may be...
That's not, that's not that we wouldn't give you an answer. This is not a forum for debating, and so we will take what you have said, just like we did last time, and staff will discuss it. If you want someone to contact you, you just have to let us know, and we will have someone contact you.
Okay, well, I'm not trying to debate anything with anybody. I'm just looking, you know, I thought I might be able to get some information about what, if anything, has been done. It's really, it's an ugly little problem. It's not unique to Nacogdoches, but it needs attention in Nacogdoches the same way it does everywhere. It's much easier not to pay attention to it and let Del Carmen, you know, sweep it under the rug. But these are, these are serious problems that affect a lot of people. And I guess next time I come back here, maybe you all will tell me what you have done, because I have not seen, you know, I've never heard a response to anything. I've just heard, you know, denials. Frankly, I'd love to hear some explanation for these disparities in the selection rates. I've never, you know, that's, that's not rocket science. It's basically the high school math that I got. And it, numbers mean something. And I think you perceive it at the city's peril in not paying attention to the data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes?
Can I answer some of his questions?
I'm going to ask our city manager or attorney, because that is something we usually, we usually do not do directly before council has a chance to ask some questions also, so...
Mayor, if it's okay, you know, if you don't mind, go ahead and ask your, asking your questions, or talk amongst yourselves, ask questions of Chief Weems. Certainly, I'd be happy to give my business card to the gentleman, and we can certainly set up an appointment, you know, to talk through some of the issues that he described.
Well, I know traditionally, we did not, you know, answered questions directly to public, because with certain issues, we can just go on and on and on and on, and so depending on how many people come. And so that would be, I think that would be a great thing to do.
Okay, so obviously you all can do what you want, and then ask anything of Mr. Weems or Chief Weems, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you so much. So, Mr. Bolden, I know that you usually cover a lot of the issues that were raised anyway, so why don't you go ahead and start off with some questions?
Well, I'm going to also say that this is an ongoing subject, and I pulled the report back to 2014, and I really did not see any difference as far as percentage. Maybe a difference in the numbers, but percentage-wise, it was pretty close all the way back to 2014. I just really have a couple of questions, because from the beginning, when I first reported, there's just not been anything established as far as communication between the police force and communities, which, one of the things that Mr. Garrigan brought up about contacts, why there was more contacts with African Americans. And one of the things that during my research, I looked up was, and somebody in other cities asked, where is the most stops? And is it in or out of our minority neighborhoods? I mean, what they stated was, most cities have distinct neighborhoods with different amounts of minority representation, crime rate, police presence. If minority neighborhoods are based on below-average incomes and above-average crime rates, then police presence will be prevalent in these neighborhoods. This would lead to a bias in observed stops of minority members, not necessarily due to racial profiling, but based on disproportion of police presence in minority neighborhoods. Would you say that's a fair assessment of the state?
I would, sir, and that's an accurate statement. When we do get called, or we get several calls, that there's increased violence in these neighborhoods, as you've seen in the report that I provided you, the cover page, the increase in deadly conducts, the increase in aggravated assaults, which are any type of shooting or stabbing, they've been happening in some of the minority neighborhoods, and so we are getting a call to increase patrol over there. Well, once you increase patrol, then you're going to have more contacts in that particular area. So it's a kind of a catch-22. If you want to, if you want to do what you're supposed to be doing for the citizens that care about their community in the neighborhoods, these neighborhoods, then you've got to get over there and work for them. And if we don't get over there, then we're not doing a service to the community.
And I base that statement you just made on lack of communication between the police department and communities. And we don't have that in my neighborhood. I mean, I do know that they make different events in majority-white neighborhoods, but they don't do that in my neighborhood. That is one of the issues as to where, for some reason, our cities in general appear to be working in two directions, work, working up the lines of communications and structure that foster ongoing dialogue. We don't... that foster ongoing dialogue. We don't do that in, in Nacogdoches. Ongoing dialogue with community groups. And in, in respect to that, these, if that was the effort that was put out, it would be useful in diffusing tension, restore trust, sharpen the focus on profiling issues. How do the police department feel in regard to day-to-day activities, including racial profiling, in regards to that statement about communication?
So basically, if I understand you correctly, we need to be communicating a little more in the neighborhoods that, that we're patrolling, doing extra patrol in due to the fact for the increase in violence. Is that correct?
Well, now, we see the patrol, but we don't, we haven't been communicating as to why are we doing this?
I understand that. So, so we're there.
Yeah.
You just don't know why we're there.
Yeah, and, and I run into people like, why are they constantly in my neighborhood on my street?
Well. I can see where we need an open dialogue. And to be honest with you, when I'm over there, I roll my window down, and I, I know a lot of people, and, and they know me. So usually when I'm cruising through there, they're asking who I'm looking for. And so I get what you're saying. We need to be over there more for, hey, how are y'all doing today? And, and we're not over here trying to, to put somebody in jail or... But, but again, we are over there because the people that, that request us to come over there are, are good citizens that want a peaceful neighborhood, and they're, and they're requesting us to come over there.
And I understand what you just said, but one of the things, open communications are extremely critical. It does not matter how accurate data and collection analysis we do. If the community does not feel engaged in the process, it's not going to work.
I believe you're absolutely right.
That was just statements that I wanted to make, but I, a couple of questions. When, when there is contact made, when there is a stop made, has it already been determined that there was a violation, a possible violation?
Yes, sir. On, on motor vehicle contacts, you're contacting that vehicle, that person, because they have violated some form of the law. Either speeding or running a red light, or, or what have you, or even, even a penal code violation, which is a much higher. So when we do stop a vehicle, it's because they have violated the law in some manner. Whether we know who's driving it or not, we're still making a traffic stop on that vehicle, and that's what we're counting here. Now, they're not investigative stops. Investigative stops are different. That is where we know something occurred, they called in, they say we got a, we got a car over here that whatever it is, here's the description, and the officer comes upon that a car. These are not counted in this tier-two data. These are, these are facts that we already know, and so they're not counted in the tier-two data. All, the only thing counted in the tier-two data is motor vehicle contacts based off of traffic stops.
Okay. Is there at any time that, any circumstances that, in which the police think profiling, racial profiling is useful?
No, sir.
If, if you don't know the race when you stop someone, do you, does that require me to ask that person that? Do you assume you know?
I think that's in the RASIS ticket rider automatically, and so we have to fill in the blanks, but, but like we said, twelve percent of the time is the only time that we, we knew the race of the individual.
In your opinion, is, is Nacogdoches, that data collected, is that a true reflection of get none by stop?
In my opinion, it is, sir. Because I work with these men and women every day. And if I believed it, that this was happening, we would put a stop to it. It's bad for the city, it's bad for the police department, it's bad for our community.
I wrote a little note while probably because, and I wrote a couple of things down. Drivers nervous or anxious beyond the ordinary at anxiety. And it was stated in my reading there somewhere, cultural communication styles, and I have no idea what that means.
And that was in Dr. Del Carmen's?
Yeah.
Okay, so if, without trying to find it, I'm going off of memory, so bear with me. That's probably caused, talking about criminal interdiction. And that's where the K-9 guys work, the Highway fifty-nine corridor. And they network with other agencies throughout the, the US. Because that, that corridor comes all the way from Houston up to Chicago and, and beyond. So what they do is, and they're trained in, in the interdiction field, which, to, to read the drivers, to go through the, the, I guess, the, the motions of, do you determine this guy to be a courier, or is he just a driver coming through, going from one place to another? They're trained, well-trained in that, to where there is no racial profiling, there is no, they couldn't make a case if, if they acted upon racial profiling.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, but also that, to me, is a little biased, because we do have a lot of, this is an area that people pass through. Not everybody's accent's gonna be the same, et cetera.
Correct.
I have a problem with that. But I, I understand that that's part of the drug carrier profile, from my understanding.
Yes, sir.
And another one that I thought was a little biased was drivers, young male, twenty to thirty-five.
That's part of the training that they go through with the, the federal government, who is responsible for some of the training. And me not being a K-9 or an interdict officer, nor was I, I'd hate to get in the weeds with that.
Thank you, Chief. But my opinion has really, if I read this report and I go back and read all of the report, nothing has changed. I know no more than two percent, three percent since twenty-fourteen.
Right.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Honestly, Mr. Bolden has, has asked and addressed a lot of the things that I wanted to address, particularly a lack of, or at least from my perception, from my experience, a lack of just friendly interaction with, with what at least statistically appear to be more problematic areas of town. And I, I agree wholeheartedly that a greater effort in that area would probably bring those areas to a point where you, you would see a more proportional number of calls from them. If they see a regular presence that is not something viewed as, as being potentially hostile, or, or something about which they should be worried. And, you know, I, I just, I feel like I cannot overstate how important that, that effort could be to, to sort of bringing these, the, the numbers of calls that you get in various areas of town more in line with each other. And more importantly than that, it, it, it will let neighborhoods, areas that have been more problematic, they will not see the police as being the enemy.
Right.
And that, that helps you.
Correct.
It helps the community. And, you know, I, beyond that, I, I won't belabor that point too much, but, but I think we're, working on some very specific programs to, to do that, single out these areas that, that seem to receive more direct calls for attention from the police. And, and really try to work on coming up with a way, you know, whether it's having a barbecue in those neighborhoods, or, you know, whether it's doing some sort of sporting event where everybody can be included. And, you know, whether or not you will get participation in that, I, I can't say. But trying it, to me, and trying it again and again until maybe you get some results, I, I think would be a very good thing. And it would make your job easier, your, your officer's jobs easier, on top of, on top of the tremendous benefit to the community, I think, that that would, would have. So that there's, there's not an adversarial relationship there. And that, I know from your perspective, you guys don't want that adversarial relationship.
We don't.
And, and I don't think the citizens do either. But got to sort of bridge that gap one way or another, and just, just getting out there and and shaking hands and talking to people, you know, that, that alone. And I, I know there are individual officers who do it, but doing it in, in a more cohesive effort, I think, could be really beneficial.
I, I know, and I'm not making excuses, I know when we get back to a decent staff, we are very understaffed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know that, that there's a manpower issue right now, absolutely.
And when COVID, when we kind of lift some of the COVID, there are some things that we're gonna do, and we're gonna start back with our school lunches. Send an officer to the lunch, have lunch with the kids. Once you start there, the kids bring that home, once they bring it home, they're less likely to say, hey, hey, that's my friend.
Yeah, because they, they know that person.
We're going back to that. I'm saying we were doing that.
Face, and, yeah.
Right, and, and I think, we gotta get over this, this bad year we had.
Yeah, yeah, it, it has been a little hard to turn some things around. Um, you know, with, with manpower issues, with the pandemic issues.
But there's a few things. We're gonna start back with the Citizens Police Academy, and we're gonna try to add more Citizens Police Academies. We went from one every other year. We're gonna try to at least do one a year. And if that works out, we might even do two a year. And we're gonna try to reach out to the neighborhoods and encourage them to come to it. We have in the past, we've had a little participation. But, but a lot of times, we don't.
Yeah.
So if we have more, I think if we do have more Citizens Police Academies, and we reach out to the neighborhoods, then we're offering, hey, here's your chance to come, really get to know what we do and why we do it.
Yeah, well, and once you get, once you get staffed up again, and, and you know, you can do these things safely once we get to the vaccination point, that we can do these things safely. I, I know, I know a few restaurant owners here in town who would love to participate in, in gatherings by donating some food. And, you know, I, I just think there are a lot of, a lot of things that seem minor, but brought together, I think they can make a huge difference in, in how you and your officers are perceived by the community and vice versa.
Right.
And that's all I have for it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
So I got the bad microphone? No, it's loud.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you.
Okay. Hi, Chief Weems.
How are you?
Fine, thank you. I miss seeing you at the gym in the morning.
Well, I'm still there.
I am not. But I do miss you. Okay. I, I, first of all, I want to start off by saying that I appreciate the work that you guys do. I think that you've done a really good job since our beloved chief has been recovering, and so thank you for stepping into that role, to you and, and Assistant Chief Tera Vella that I see back there. I, I support Councilmember Bolden's and Anderson's statement on community engagement. I think that the only thing that I'll say in addition to that is that community engagement is really tough. Specifically and particularly as it pertains to the relationship between law enforcement and the community. And there might be, there are issues there that have nothing to do with you or the people who are currently serving our, our city as police officers, but they are these historical, I guess, based on historical relationships and bad things that have happened, that again, is not through any fault of yours, but those scars remain in those neighborhoods. And so trust-building is a really difficult but necessary part of that, that I think that, you know, and, and it's difficult work. I, I, while I appreciate and understand, you know, even going out there, having a presence, having events and that kind of stuff, I think help, is helpful, but I, it, it's more than that. The, the, the trust-building is, is, is more than, than having a barbecue maybe in a particular neighborhood. And I, I know that, that you guys have the heart for it. And I hope, first of all, that this is a dialogue, that the beginning of a dialogue where we can start discussing how to really establish trust in relationships that have historically, in communities, sorry, that have historically not had a positive relationship with law enforcement. Because, I mean, is what people have said, when, when there is a positive relationship between community and law enforcement, everybody, everybody benefits. And so I hope that this can be the beginning of, of positive dialogue about how we can do important community engagement work across the board, not just law enforcement, across, across city departments. The other thing, I agree with what Mr. Garrigan said about the raw numbers not really saying much. I, I was looking through, and I couldn't make sense of, of, of it, and I am not a math whiz by any account, but it, it was hard for me to paint a picture of what the numbers, what are the numbers saying to me? And I didn't take it to, to the calculation of what Mr. Garran, Garrigan mentioned of three-hundred percent. He said that that was high school-level math. I didn't even get to high school-level math. Math, I might be intermediate school. But something that did jump out at me was the, the percentages of the searches. And so the sixty-two percent, sixty-two percent of stop, but sorry. Yeah, sixty-two percent of the stop, no, I have it backwards. See, this is why I'm not good at this. So the searches, if I read the report correctly, sixty-two percent of black people stopped or searched. Yes, that's what it was, versus twenty-two percent of white people who were stopped or searched.
Right.
And when you look at the raw numbers, right, two-hundred-and-five people, two-hundred-and-five black people were searched versus seventy-two white people who were searched. But there were a lot more white people stopped than black people stopped. So tho, those are numbers that, that jump out at me. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
It does.
I sure hope so, because it, I am like, my brain is doing cartwheels around this.
And I'm glad you brought it up, because I wanted to explain it.
Yes, sir.
And we'll just knock it out right here if you want me to.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so probable cause. When you flip back over to the tier-two data that covers why they, the, the searches were conducted. And you can see that probable cause, out of one-hundred-and-sixty-four, one-hundred-and-fifteen were black and thirty-four were white. All right, so probable cause is when you walk up to a vehicle, you have probable cause, you develop probable cause to, to search the vehicle. And a lot of times, for the most part, and I, I don't know about every stop, but there's a lot of stops where you walk up and you either see or smell marijuana or some other contraband inside the car. So if you will look, that number's high. That is, probable cause means I'm gonna search your car, because this is what I've developed. And that leads to that high number, because we've got a high number here. As far as consent, you know, we can ask for consent, and a lot of times we will ask for consent. But if we're working a school zone or, or another location, we're not gonna ask for consent, we're just gonna write the ticket and move on. There's a lot of officers that, that's all they want to do, they don't care about anything else. Now, the ones, the K-9, the K-9 units are in Now, the ones, the K nine, the K nine units are in this. And that's their job to try to stop the interdiction, the, the criminal interdiction. And so when they walk up and they have some kind of probable cause, then that's why that number gets high. Regardless of who it is or what color they are, they develop probable cause and it goes from there. So that number coincides with the other number that you're reading. So that leads to that higher percentage, so. But we're still going back to the twelve percent that we know who they are when we stop them.
Right.
So we have to have that in, in play also. So if we know who twelve percent of the people are, but we don't know who eighty-eight percent of the other people are. And we make a stop, this number comes up, then it leaves me to believe that we're still doing what we do, what we're supposed to be doing legally, without racial profiling. But we're leading into these higher numbers.
Yeah, so my concern is less with the, with, with the stop and more so with the decision to search somebody. And so you're, what you said about the probable cause, and actually, I'm, I'm remembering now, something went off in my brain, I think that. Councilmember Bolden mentioned this or asked this question maybe last year. But the probable cause, so as, as it came up, as I remember in the report, probable cause, which just said, was there probable cause or not, right? But i- is there any accountability there, right? So, cuz it doesn't say a reason, right, it doesn't say smelled something, saw something.
Yeah, these stats will.
They won't. Okay, so I would be interested to see.
Well, it's all lumped into probable cause.
I understand that, but then if, if it's all lumped into probable cause, then. You're, where's the accountability in that is my question.
All right, so the accountability comes with the audits. And the audits are conducted by the supervisors of each of these officers. And we have video, we have the, the, the body mics.
Yes.
And the body video, so they're required to review the, the video of, in these audits, it's not every one of them, but it's a percentage of them.
Okay.
And so they're required to, to review a percentage of these, uh, video stops. And if they see anything that's out of the ordinary, then they call that officer in and say, okay, what happened here? So that's our checks and balances. So we have them in place. I can't tell you, because these are just raw numbers, I can't tell you about every stop, but again, they're lumped in together. I smell marijuana, I see a handgun, I, I see some kind of contraband, that's all probable cause.
Right.
And it's up to us to have our checks and balances.
Sure, I, okay, yeah.
And that's how we do it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, my last thing is that I'm gonna say to you is that, um, you know, I think that we're all here because we want the best for Nacogdoches. I don't think that you guys would be serving in the position that you were serving, and if you didn't want the best for your community. Um, I do not believe that you would hire people that you think would racially profile. In the same way, I believe that Mr. Garrigan spent his afternoon here of his own time, also because he cares about this community. And so I think that while there may be some disagreement, if you, when people who disagree sit across the table from each other and hash out things and talk about things. We ha- we find so much more common ground than, and, and it's surprising and helpful. And I think that with those conversations and with those disagreements, um, we become better. You know, and criticism isn't bad, it's good if it can make us better. And, um, and, and so with that, I just, I would love to encourage, and I don't know, but I'm just letting you know, Mario, that I care about this. I would love to encourage some sort, or facilitate, or some sort of discussion where we can talk about, okay, Mr. Garrigan, what are your findings? And why do you think this, and let's discuss this, and if there aren't answers, let's try to figure out the answers or, oh, because. If what, let's say if the three hundred percent that, that black people get searched three hundred percent more and there isn't an explanation for it, let's say that that is true. Let's say that that is a given. I'm sure that you would wanna know that and address it, cuz you care about this community and you want to, the best for this community. And so that's sort of what, what, what I wanna encourage is, is coming to the table and opening up dialogue to, to address this. So that in a year, or then in two years, Mr. Garran is, Garrigan and come and saying the same thing, and you guys aren't feeling like you have to defend yourself. When you know the people that you hire and you trust the people that you hire. Does that make sense?
It's a lot of sense.
I, I, you and I have talked about things.
We have.
And you, I have found both of you to be some of the easiest people to talk to and some of the most pleasant people. To talk to, I think that we're really lucky to have you guys, I've known Mr. Garrigan since I was a little girl. And so I can say the same thing about him and I just, I feel hopeful about having an open dialogue about something like this.
I'm, I'm for it.
Yes, thank you, I missed the first part of it, but I've read it, I appreciate it. So one thing I'm kinda curious, I, I was diving in more to the probable cause as well. And so, uh, Mr. Bolden hit on something that I hadn't even considered is the calls or requests for patrol relative to the number of arrests or contacts in that given area. And I appreciate that the whole purpose of this in particular is racial profiling, and this is basically neutral of all that. But I think it'd be interesting to see statistics or a heat map or something along those lines, where you see a correlation or not between specific neighborhoods or parts of neighborhoods. That have ten times many phone calls, do they have ten times many contacts and arrests? And if so, okay, that's less, less racial, more.
Call for service.
Yeah, more, more causal, yeah, absolutely. And so, you know, when I look at, when I looked at the, uh, the probable cause, I, cuz I saw that, I hear the three hundred percent and I was wrestling with that in here. And I see roughly three hundred percent more probable cause on African-Americans from white. Um, and then that's translated over almost perfectly on the search conduction as well. We've got two hundred and five, it's, it's like twice as many. Searches with or without, or with probable cause, excuse me. The probable cause of, of black folks is a hundred and fifteen, you get a, uh, two hundred and five searches, thirty-four to seventy-two on white. And so to me, the numbers line up, if you take race out of it, and I, again, I appreciate that this whole thing is to make sure that we're not in violation of doing terrible things. But diving in there, I don't know if that's necessarily gonna be in this type of report, if that's something we've gotta do internally. But to me, that would be a very valuable part of that conversation, uh, when you're sitting across the table and within the community, having that dialogue.
Right.
Is being able to show it's very closely tied to. These phone calls, these requests for patrol. One thing that I talked to my wife about, I think maybe last year's presentation, in Houston, I wanna say it was Chief Lee Brown in the eighties. Put together some sort of a community engagement program, and it's a lot of the things that we've done too. The police academies, and they had something called Neighborhood Oriented Policing. And I haven't fleshed that out and taken a deep dive, my wife has, and so I probably should have brought her. But I was curious, have, have, are there any standout communities that, that are receiving awards, not just for raw data, but are known for having incredible relations with all demographics? I mean, Houston's huge, but are there any, are there any that we could model ourselves after and find what little pieces have they added to the pie for that community engagement? Is, is there any that come to mind, or may- maybe that's something we could dive into? Or maybe Mario has some good.
After twenty twenty, I don't, we would have to start over, if you've watched the news. But, uh, we could, we could look into that. That neighborhood oriented policing sometimes is another word for, and I didn't, I don't know this for fact, but sometimes is another word for. Kinda like a, a team that goes out and does just what, uh, we're, we need to be doing, or we're gonna start in twenty twenty-one this year. Is try to find out who's doing all the violent crime and let's put a stop to it and get the citizens a little piece back. So. But I don't know, since it's the eighties, I don't know, that's well before I started.
Sure, sure, very, I, she had, she had, uh, sent me a link probably a year ago about this time. And it was talking about some of the programs they had involved, and then it had traced back for like thirty-something years.
Right.
And so that's, that's where my wanderings had gone.
I do, uh, I did include, I think I did include, uh, the heat maps for the violent crime, uh, in that last, I guess with the packet. So it shows where we're concentrating on a lot of the violent crime in, in different areas of the city. And it, it was broken down into other crimes, violent crimes. I can't remember the other one, but.
Sure, absolutely. Any, any communities that, that get accolades that you can think of that would be something that we could model after or try to take little pieces from their engagement efforts?
We'll look into that, I don't, right now, I don't know that any community has that locally or around this region, but. I don't, I don't think Houston does right now.
Sure.
I think they're having issues.
And they just lost their chief too.
And I'm quite sure Dallas is, yeah, Dallas is, yeah.
Houston just lost its chief?
In Miami, he went to Miami. But, uh, Dallas is having issues, there's. We would have to really search hard right now after this horrible year that we had, so, uh, but we will.
May- maybe that's where, a place where the smaller communities can shine a little bit, because to me.
Matter of fact, and I'm not bragging, but I know we, we came out unscathed so far with our community, everybody was at peace, so I'm really proud of that. It shows a little bit of cohesiveness here between the community and the police department, so.
It, it does seem like a place for us to shine, I, I don't know how you would do your job in Houston, that just seems super difficult. If you live in Sugar Land or Missouri City, but you're in downtown Houston. How, how in the world do you really get to know the people that you're policing and trying to help, that seems a lot more difficult. So I, I will say, I live by a police officer, I, I know quite a few of them, and that's just from doing life, not necessarily being involved in city council.
Right.
That's massively advantageous, so the small communities, it seems like, you guys do an outstanding job. I, I just think that's an opportunity for us to really shine and do a good, good job there. And my, my, my goal really of just trying to pick on some, some unit that does it really well is because I, I feel the pinch, like, I don't know, a barbecue and sporting events, I, I think they're great. But gosh, it seems like we're trying to reinvent the wheel, if there's, if there's a magic wheel out there somewhere, that would be wonderful just to.
A lot of our problem right now, and I'm, and again, I'm not making excuses, but, uh, at least almost a third of our community is college kids. And they're counted as citizens of the city of Nacogdoches. They come and go, as you know, especially the freshman class. So. We would be dealing with more of about two-thirds of the community and, uh. I believe we can do this.
Thank you.
There's gonna be some hurdles.
Certainly, no- nothing good comes without a cost, though.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Um, so, and can you talk about your, it is very rare for any entity to have zero complaints. So when you talk about zero complaints, do you mean formal complaints? And can you walk us through the process of when someone does come in and have an issue or call with an issue?
Okay, I, and I knew that would be a misunderstanding in here, uh, Dr. Dale Carmen really deals with racial profiling complaints. We do have complaints, they do walk in and they complain on an officer for either being rude or, or improper police procedure or whatever comes up. So we do have those and we did have some for twenty twenty. We had zero racial profiling complaints, and that's what's counted in this racial profile, and that's what's counted in the state. So it's only racial profiling complaints. Yes, we did have complaints and there's several ways to come in and complain. We have it on our website, complement complaint, as you can see from the, that we're required to by state law. Uh, you can walk in the lobby, you can, you can actually file an anonymous complaint. Now, you, eventually, they're gonna have to come in and file, file a formal complaint, sign it, write a statement of what happened. And then we get the person in there and we sit down together, I used to do this for ten years, I, so we sit down, we watch the video. And we go through what mistakes were made, if any. And s- a lot of times, we find they just wanna vent, or they wanna fight their charges right here in the police department. And now that's not allowed, they have to go through the proper criminal justice system. But, uh, that's, that's kinda how we, we do that. But to answer your question, we did have some complaints for twenty twenty.
Well, I, and I'm actually talking about racial profiling, so you, you all have not been, no one has accused or complained?
No one has complained for racial profiling for twenty twenty.
Okay. So I know that several of us do ride-alongs and it is amazing how difficult it is to tell the race of a person. When you're in a police car and you are behind a vehicle, so. I understand that and now I, but I also learned that the probable cause is not determined at that point. It's determined when you get closer and you do see.
Correct, there's traffic violation.
Right.
Which leads to possible probable cause.
Right.
But again, with your, with the windows now, they come to it.
Right.
So.
It is difficult.
It is very difficult to tell if anybody's driving the car.
Yeah. Um, and then can you, um, describe the process of how you select? A consultant or someone to do this report for you?
This was done before I became Assistant Chief. They selected Dr. Dale Carmen because he was kinda the guru of, he was the, the well-known statistician. So, a- and he worked for the police departments all throughout the, I guess, the nation, but Texas mainly. And, uh, little did we know, last year, when T Cole got in trouble, that's the law enforcement agency that, that oversees all law enforcement. So when they got in trouble for not requiring police or, uh, police departments to collect certain types of data. We had, they were, we were collecting a lot, but there was other certain types of data that, uh, we were not collecting. We were, other agencies weren't. So he steps in, he writes the new law and, uh, and now T Cole is on board and, and you, you've gotta send in what. You gotta send in to T Cole where you got your data and who did the report and show the report showing it, showing the data. So that's a requirement now, did change that. He's very, very knowledgeable in the, the police world.
It was not an RFP and it's not something that you do, I mean, you have several people that you ask to bid. Or you look at, at the information.
No, we just, we contract out to him every year and, uh.
And you will be doing so again this year, or do you change it every three or four years?
I've already sent him the letter that we will be us- utilizing his services this year also for twenty twenty-one.
So there's already contract for that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, counsel, any other discussion or questions, follow-up questions? Yes, Mr. Bolden.
Tinted windows, isn't there a violation if tinted windows are not at a certain number?
Yes, sir, but even with the, even with the, when you get to that threshold, it's still very difficult to see inside that car.
And I thought the thresh- threshold was for police to be able to see that person in the window.
That's when you're stepping up kinda closer to them, but when you're at a distance, it's very, very difficult to see through a tinted window at that distance.
Communities versus, uh, traffic stops, uh, we, uh, have more officers patrolling community that has a high crime rate?
At certain times, upon request.
Upon request.
Right, we're all over the city, but if we get, uh, if we get an area that starts showing. Higher volume of crime, violent crime, or BMVs, burger motor vehicles, then we're gonna start patrolling those areas wherever it takes us, so.
I mean, it, it doesn't seem as to whatever we are doing now is lowering the crime rate in certain neighborhoods. I mean, it's, it's expanded.
I, I totally, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, and, and like Houston, I mean, as been mentioned about Houston crime rate. It's, they have a lot of help, like a lot of the cities that's developing large communities like Paraland, Missouri City, Gersville, Humble, and all those places. Um, really, the majority of crime is coming from those communities because those people can commit crime and go back to another community.
Correct.
And unless they're arrested in that community, then everything relates back to Houston.
You're correct, uh. Problem there is we have to discover that they're from the other community first.
Right.
And that's what makes it very difficult. When we get reports that we have some kind of crime occurring. We're gonna look here first.
Right.
Because that's what we're supposed to do. Until we get leads that leads us outside the city, and a lot of times, you're absolutely right, we have chased a lot of people back to Houston. And, uh, and, and we're getting a lot more that are coming from Houston. But until we know this, we can't, we still gotta kinda stick close to home first.
Racial profiling report. I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm looking at the number like it's only been one that's been recorded for several years?
Right, for the most part. It has to, they, it has to kinda be blatant that, hey, I think this guy, uh, profiled me. Before, most of the time, they, uh, the people won't come in, they get their ticket. Before, most of the time, they, uh, the people won't come in, they get their ticket, they go fight it. But, uh, if somebody wants to fight it based on a racial profiling issue, then they come, and we let them report it, whether it's, whether it's exonerated, or sustained, or not sustained, or unfounded. It still has to go through the process. We don't stop them from coming in.
On body count, uh, when an officer asks, uh, individuals about consent, is, at times, like, okay, if you don't consent, I mean, we'll, we'll have to wait for a warrant. Uh, we're gonna check, give driver license, for priors, et cetera. Do we run across that issue?
For the most part, no, sir. Now, on a drug courier situation, and the canine hits, then we go forward with that.
Now, all of these stats that here, that's, uh, drug courier that we found on the loop, et cetera, all that, all that data then?
That's included, yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, uh, for presenting this report. And, um, I also wanted to take a moment to thank you and hope you extend it to your staff for, uh, people have no idea what you all, how you all helped and went above and beyond during our winter storm.
We're proud to do it.
Oh, well, there were so many things, but, um, but please convey that from the council because
We sure will.
that was, um, it, it was integral that you all stepped up and did above and beyond and all the extra things that, that were involved, and it really is appreciated.
Well, we thank y'all, uh, for the, if I go back to the staffing issue, we thank you for, uh, the pay increase, and that helps with retention, and that helps with recruitment, so.
Yeah.
I think we're all in it together.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, we are going to take a, uh, almost a fifteen-minute break, um, now, um, and we will resume our meeting at five thirty. Break, it is five thirty-two, uh, and we are in the midst of our, uh, meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. We've just completed a work session, uh, and now we have our open forum. Has anyone, uh, registered for that?
No.
Okay. So moving on to, uh, our consent agenda, if council would like to remove anything, uh, they are welcome to do so. If not, chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion when we pass the consent agenda as it's written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as it's written. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, so for our regular agenda, we are gonna start with a public hearing. Uh, oh, there you, I was, we were sitting behind the map. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, thank you. Y'all was hiding, I was hiding behind poster over there.
That's quite all right. Um, so welcome, we are gonna do, uh, uh, we will hear a presentation, uh, from Ms. Chafe and our, uh, city planner, and then we will open the public hearing, so go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so this request is an amendment to an existing specific use permit for a mini warehouse storage facility that was approved by council in May of last year. Um, the purpose of the amendment is to add a twenty-five-hundred square foot building uh, that wasn't included in the initial SUP site plan, uh, that you guys approved last year. And for the zoning ordinance, um, no buildings, premises, or land use under a specific use permit can be enlarged, modified, or structurally altered, um, unless you go back through the procedure of the original specific use permit. So when you have a specific use permit, there's a site plan that gets approved as, as part of that. Um, and whenever you make significant changes to it, you have to go back through that specific use permit process, and so that's what we're doing this evening. Um, just to, uh, reiterate, um, self-storage is permitted in the B two zoning district with a specific use permit, and this process allows staff and the commission and council, um, the opportunity to review and impose any conditions that may be needed on such development. Uh, this particular development includes three phases. The first phase consists of three existing structures, shown as buildings A, B, and C. Those are outlined in blue on your screen. The second phase includes three buildings, and those are shown as buildings A one, B one, and D. Those were recently completed, and those are outlined in red. And then the third and final phase are buildings E and F, and that F is the, um, that F is that new twenty-five-hundred square foot building, and those are outlined in green. The property located immediately to the south of the self-storage facility is also zone B two general business and then R three to family. The portion that's zone ju- general business is currently developed as a beverage warehouse and distribution facility. Uh, the property that is zoned, um, to family consists of eight single-family homes, and then the property to the west is zone light industrial, and it's currently vacant. Um, subject property is bound on the north side by Ernest McLean Road and on the east side by North Street. The comprehensive future land use plan designates this area as commercial, and this land use designation is consistent with the current zoning of the property that B two general business zoning category. And generally, this district is located along major traffic arteries where strip business development already exists. The office hours for this facility are between nine AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays, nine AM to noon. Uh, the facility is gated, and that daily gate access is restricted from ten PM to six AM to, um, reduce any opportunity for noise or, uh, sorry, noise or nuisances at night for those residential property owners. Uh, additionally, there's an existing detention pond and several mature trees that are located on site that create a, a natural buffer to lighten noise. This is located between the existing self-storage facility and that residential neighborhood that we just talked about. And these are some images from, uh, the end of that cul-de-sac. Uh, staff finds that the proposed use is low intensity nature, and, and we haven't had any kind of code complaints or, or calls regarding the development since its construction. Uh, we do find that it is compatible with the surrounding land uses and doesn't adversely affect any of those adjacent property owners um, or the quality of life of the single-family development to the south. Uh, we did send out twelve notices to property owners within the two-hundred-foot notification area, um, but we didn't receive any contacts regarding the request. And I would like to note that this, um, this zoning request and the one after it was not subject to the additional noticing practices that council approved in January. Uh, those will be in place for all the applications that we receive on and after March first. So the next zoning you see will, uh, be subject to those additional provisions. So a zoning change or a specific use permit may be approved if all of the following conditions have been found, and those are outlined on your screen. Uh, based on the findings outlined in the staff report and those that we mentioned during the presentation, uh, we do find that these conditions have been satisfied, and we recommend approval of the amendment to the specific use permit. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their regular meeting on February eighth, and they also recommended approval unanimously by a vote of five to zero. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. I also believe that the applicant is joining us remotely if you guys have any questions or, uh, would like to address some directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak, um, against, um, this specific use permit? Is there anyone that would like to speak for? Okay. Hearing none. The, uh, public hearing is now closed, and, uh, Mr. Bolden, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement.
You're in agreement?
With the planning and zoning committee.
Okay, Mr. Hands?
I, I liked the property. They did a good job and followed through with everything they said they would. Uh, it's, it looks very pleasant. I'm sure it's, I hope it's doing good business. I was curious, on the personal property taxes on that type of setup, i- is there a certain exemption? Or at what point, if a business stored some sort of valuable personal property in there, does that get taxed? Or how does that work? Do you know?
Um, I'm, I'm not as familiar with the nuances of, of commercial appraisal. I'm more familiar with the residential side. So for instance, if you had like a large acreage lot with your homestead, you could carve out your homestead, and that could be taxed differently than the remaining undeveloped portion of the property. I'm assuming it might be a similar scenario for commercial, but I'm honestly, I'm not sure.
More just curious, as you were presenting, pop up. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No, I don't have any questions.
Ms. Fisher?
She can't, mayor, she can't hear us. She's, she's having trouble getting, uh, being able to hear us. We're working on it.
Okay. Um, so let me ask a question and see if it's resolved, and then we may table our vote until she can participate, if that's okay, and move on to the next one. Uh, would that be okay to do?
We want to restart, to try to get her back in.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you need to restart everything, so we need to pause for a moment.
Do you mind if we can just take a, just a little technical, just a break?
Let's do that. Take a short technical interruption. Yes.
Amelia, can you hear us now?
Amelia, can you hear? Okay. Um, I was wondering if anyone else that's joined us. Charlie, are you on there? Can you hear us?
Can you hear us now, Amelia?
Yes. Yes! Sorry, y'all.
That's okay. Did you miss the whole presentation?
I sure did, but I'll catch up. I mean, I read the materials, so.
Okay. Um, so there, I was trying to think, there, um, didn't have a whole lot of questions. Do you have any questions about it? Uh, we didn't have anyone speak during the public hearing.
No, mayor, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, of course, of course. Uh, the only question I had was the landscaping. I know that there was screening to the adjacent property, but the, is that all that's, uh, required?
Uh, there's the, um, screening adjacent to the residential area, and there's also commercial district landscaping, uh, that requires plantings along the street front edge.
Right.
And those have all been installed, and those plantings satisfy the requirements. So it's, it's currently meeting all of our, um, all of our land development codes for commercial development.
Good, good. That's good. Okay, thank you. Um, so if there are no further questions, then the chair would entertain, um, a motion for amending that, um, specific use permit.
Will I make a motion to approve the ordinance, amend in, uh, specific use permit, agenda item seven A?
Second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve agenda item seven A as it's written. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're going to move on to seven B, and, um, I believe that you have, I'm gonna let you take it.
Yes, thank.
Make your statement.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to take a moment and note for the record that after, uh, we posted these, this evening's agenda, we did identify a typographical error regarding this item. So the agenda caption item currently reads, uh, to consider an ordinance admitting the boundaries of a zoning district within the city of Nacogdoches from R four multifamily. Um, it should read from B two general business to R four multifamily. And so that was a typographical error, um, that staff missed, uh, missed. However, um, the legal ad that was published in the newspaper, uh, the written notices that were sent to the adjacent property owners, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission agenda, all of the documents in the agenda packet that reference the project, the staff report, all of those have the correct information. Um, and so we did reach out to our city attorney, Robert Davis, just to confirm that, that the typo wouldn't affect any kind of, like, legal requirements. Um, and he noted that because everything else was correct, that it was just a typo, it doesn't affect the legal posting of the agenda. So we just wanted to clarify that for the record and, um, have those observed in the minutes. All right. Um, so I guess that's the introduction of the item. Um, would you like me to move forward with the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Uh, so this is a request for a zone change from B two general business to R four multifamily for approximately twenty-five acres located on the north side of Martinsville Street, um, approximately twelve hundred feet east of University Drive. The multifamily zoning district is intended for higher-density residential areas, which may contain a mixture of single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. The applicant does intend to develop the property as a unified duplex development, specifically marketed towards university students. Uh, the current B two general business zoning of the property, um, already allows for the construction of multifamily by right today. However, the definition of a multifamily structure is limited to a building that contains at least three or more dwelling units, meaning other residential structure types like duplexes and single-family structures wouldn't be permitted under that zoning district. Um, so the applicant is requesting a change to R four multifamily to allow for the duplex development, um, on this property. Uh, the area consists primarily of both multifamily and commercial zoning districts and existing developments. Uh, specifically, there's multifamily developments located immediately to the north and south across Martinsville Street. Uh, there's some vacant property to the east, and then to the west along University Drive. There are several commercial and, and retail development sites, including, uh, University Mall, and then right there on the corner, uh, the Walmart Neighborhood Market. The staff finds that the zone change request of the R four multifamily is compatible with the zoning and the developed uses in the area. The future land use plan designates the majority of the subject property in the surrounding areas multifamily, with the Northern Most tract designated as rural development. Uh, the proposed multifamily zoning district is consistent with the land uses that are described in the multifamily future land use designation. And it's also important to note, and as a reminder, that the future land use map is not a, a partial specific mandate for how land should be developed, whether it's a visual guide to help visualize the desired, uh, pattern of development in a given area. For example, uh, the comprehensive plan specifically states that, since the location and timing of apartment development is very highly market-driven, and it's difficult to, uh, depict that on a future land use map, you could have a proposed multifamily residential development that could receive a favorable, favorable review even if it wasn't illustrated on the plan. So that's just an example. The zoning request also achieves one of the long-term goals of the comprehensive plan, specifically inward growth. Uh, the targeted objectives of the goal are to encourage infill development where appropriate in regards to utilities and compatibility. Uh, it also includes planning for mixing and or separation of land uses, and then promoting growth where adequate infrastructure already exists. So these are some images that we took along Martinsville Street, and there's a key map on, in the upper le- left-hand corner to give you an idea of what section of Martinsville Street that you're looking at. Uh, the subject property does have access to both water and sewer utilities, and the direct access is to Martinsville Street. Uh, this street is designated as a future major collector on the city's thoroughfare plan and functions as the primary access for all of the residential uses in the area. Uh, this section of Martinsville Street between University Drive and, and Park Street is generally constructed as a two-lane local is generally constructed as a two-lane local street. The western portions of the street are your standard 32-foot-wide pavement section, curb and gutter with a 60-foot right-of-way. The eastern section of Martinsville Street narrows to about 24 feet with open ditch drainage. The right-of-way width in this section is undocumented and mostly prescriptive, and any new development along this narrow segment of Martinsville Street would be required to sell right-of-way for additional upgrades to the facility to satisfy the city's thoroughfare plan. We did communicate this to the applicant, and they have verbally agreed to work with staff to acquire that right-of-way for that future upgrade. It's also important to note that the current commercial zoning of the property, like I stated earlier, does allow multi-family and general commercial uses there today. And these zoning districts are really intended to be located along your collectors and your arterials, which have the greater capacity to accommodate that high-volume traffic that's generated by those more intense commercial land uses. The proposed multi-family zoning would actually, in effect, decrease the overall traffic demand because you're eliminating those high-volume traffic commercial uses that are allowed by right today. We also provided in capacity analysis. So the comfortable traffic capacities of Martinsville Street today are as much as 850 vehicles per hour, or 20,000 vehicles per day. This is significantly more than the current observed traffic volumes. The proposed multi-family addition could have as many as 700 dwelling units based on the traditional multi-family-style complex and the acreage that's there today, but factoring in parking and terrain and detention and all those other things that come with development, practically, you're looking at around 500 units. So based on that, you could have some additional traffic volume, up to 3,600 trips per day. This is well below the current traffic capacity of the street. All right, we did send out 23 written notices to property owners within the notification area. We did receive an email from one of the residents nearby, and I believe they signed up to speak, so you'll hear from them in a minute. And they did have specific concerns regarding increased traffic due to future development. And they also had specific concerns regarding some mineral interests that they have for the underlying zoning tracks. And I did want to just provide a brief explanation of those concerns. We did reach out and contact that resident and try to get some more specifics on what their concerns were. So I'll just take a minute, just to give you like a high-level overview of the specific concerns that they cited, just to explain that in more detail. So for those in the audience, those watching at home who aren't familiar with mineral rights, these are, there's surface rights that allow you to develop land above ground, and then there's mineral rights that allow you to access oil, gas, all those underground minerals. And in Texas, it's not uncommon for those to be sold separately, to buy a piece of property where you have the right to develop the land, but then not actually maintain the rights to harvest those minerals underneath. And so whenever this happens, it doesn't preclude development. All it does is require a negotiation between the future leasing of that property and the surface owner on where oil sites are going to be located, where drill sites are going to be located, where access is going to be. But the surface right owner is obligated to provide access to that mineral rights owner. But those are typically worked out with private contracts after the fact, and they're not usually a part of the zoning discussion. But I did want to bring it to your attention. And there's a lot of law for mineral rights, and I won't go into it. But we do have our city attorney available. If you guys have more specific questions, I just wanted to give you a high-level overview of what that was and the implications on this particular zoning case. Also, this case was not subject to those additional notification requirements that we talked about that you guys approved in January. So again, a zoning change or a specific use permit may be approved if all of the following conditions are found, as outlined on your screen. Again, based on the findings in the staff report and those that we mentioned during our presentation, we do find that the request meets the conditions, and we do recommend approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their regular meeting on March 8th, and they also recommended approval of their request unanimously, three to zero. I did also want to note that the applicant did reach out to the resident with concerns about the mineral rights, and they're having conversations about how to address those issues into the future. And they're also available, they're remoting in, if you guys have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Okay, if not, Justin, would you go ahead and call Deborah Pruitt, please?
I reached out to the resident with concerns about the mineral rights, and they're having conversations about how.
Hello?
Deborah?
Yes.
This is Mayor Brophy. Can you mute, or, well, what does she need to do?
Just pause whatever.
Okay. Well, I'm hearing the background.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm watching, I'm watching the meeting online.
Okay, can you turn that volume down?
Yes, I can turn it down.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So I have opened the public hearing for those who want to speak against this ordinance. And so if you would like to go ahead and speak, please go right ahead.
Okay, this is for Deborah Pruitt?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to submit comments. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's a feedback echo, I'm sorry. I appreciate the opportunity to submit comments to the council. We received a notification because we are owners of the 1722 Martinsville Street, the one house on the street. It's a historical home that is located across the street from this zoning change. And we are concerned in regard to increased development here. I heard the comments from the planner that said that this road was sufficient for the traffic load. But I invite you to drive this road. It narrows down to this tiny little 24-foot road with open ditches on each side. Mailbox, I mean, we have school buses, we have traffic since the Moses Middle School was built, and the Walmart. This has become a major cut-through. And the, the speed limit is supposed to be 20 miles an hour, which no one abides by at all. Also, if you are coming from the Park Street to University, there is a curve and a hill and a blind driveway to the Pruitt Townhome that sit back behind our building. And this is a major concern. Just today, just in the 16-minute interval, there were 114 cars that passed. And that is a concern whether it's business or whether it's residential. However, if it's residential, then, you know, with increased density, then, you know, that's a concern, whether it's business or whatever. The city needs to do something about this. Someone is going to get seriously hurt because of this situation. And just this zoning change has brought it to light to us. We have, this is a historical house, which would stay in our family because it's been owned by the family since 1908, essentially, most of that time. And that's a great concern. The second item was, we are also mineral interest owners under the tracks in question. The family owned 50% of the mineral interests under the track, which was leased, I think in the last time it was leased was 2010, but just was not pursued because of budgetary purposes. But we, as mineral interest owners, are also constituents of the county. It's not just surface owners, and it's not just developers. And we don't want to have the minerals essentially condemned because of development over our tracks, because there's state railroad commission footage requirements from property lines and from easements and from roads and from buildings. And there's only so much negotiation you can do if the powers that be basically keep approving increased density over every tract without making some allowances. So those are our major concerns, those things. I really think it's an emergency situation with this being used as a cut-through from Park to University due to the traffic and those school buses that are on this, on this road. I invite you to drive it yourself and see what your thoughts are on this. Come at 3:30 in the afternoon and drive it yourself and see what you think.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah. Do you want to put Tom on the phone?
I can.
Well, I had on, in my notes, that he wanted to speak also. If you have taken care of that, that's fine.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that was Pat. He said no. I think you're thinking of his brother, Pat. Pat, I believe, wanted to speak. Tom told me I'd taken care of everything, so he's not interested in speaking. But, but we have spoken to the developer, and number one, they were not aware that there were outstanding mineral interests underlying that, and I invited them to finish doing their title work. And we told them that we would be amenable to any kind of negotiation or sale of the minerals or whatever. But if that does not happen, then we are still in the same bad situation we were there before.
Okay, anything else?
I think that covers it, and I think that my, that Pat may be expecting a call from you to be able to make his comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Deborah.
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Of course. Have a good evening.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so is there anyone else that wants to speak against? Okay. And I'm, I don't see anyone on here that's currently listening that's raising a hand or anything. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for the zoning change? Okay, Blacklock Partners. Is that, that's not part of the... Okay. Yes, Blacklock Partners, who is speaking, please?
Hello, my name is J.D. Blacklock, and yes, I was the applicant of the, of the first Agenda Item. And I just wanted to speak for this project a little bit. I went to SFA, and this developer is pretty well-known. I also went to Baylor, and they have a very nice, high-end townhome place for students to live, and it was really popular, and we didn't have anything like that at SFA. And if we would have had something, I think that the students would have really enjoyed it. And I think it would be an asset to Nacogdoches, a way to bring in more people, more students, and kind of create a more high-end place to live for students. Also, the, I think the applicant is actually not increasing density by doing this. They are actually going down in density. They're not trying to build a giant apartment complex. They are building, you know, more like student townhomes. So I think that that actually would decrease density in some of these bigger projects. So I just wanted to speak in favor of it. I also own another property where it's 100% developed, and I own the minerals. And I have the minerals leased, and they're able to extract those minerals from like a half-mile away because I don't, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an oil and gas expert, but I do know that a lot of people are using horizontal drilling and able to extract any minerals from, from very far away. And I think that any, any minerals that were extracted from the site would also have to get a special permit from the city in order to do that. But I don't, I just don't think it affects the, the development of this, of this kind. And I just thought it would be a nice thing for the city of Nacogdoches and wanted to speak in favor, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, J.D., appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, have a good evening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the, for the zoning change? Okay, public hearing is now closed. And we will start with Mr. Hens.
Sure. So I understand what, what she was saying about the mineral rights. From what I can remember in, I don't know, the last 10 years of buying and selling property, I've never owned mineral rights. I don't think it's very common at this point in time, especially in Texas, that minerals, I mean, maybe Councilmember Anderson could speak to this more than I can, but it seems pretty rare that those transfer with the property at this point in time. And so I don't really think that's, that's a heavy consideration for us here. From my perspective, I'm familiar with, not the developer as a company, but I'm familiar with some of the projects they have done. They are beautiful. I think that would be a pretty good asset for us right up there in that area, too. So no real questions, but just wanted to at least get on the table the discussion about the mineral rights. I don't think that's a valid part of this conversation.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I would tend to agree with that, especially given that, that they do own some nearly-adjacent property. If they, if they wanted to extract minerals from underneath the property in question, it can be done.
Do you want to speak to any other part of it?
Yes, I do. I'm, I'm not against the development in general. I do have some serious concerns about the traffic on that street because I do know that street well. It has a lot of school traffic, morning and afternoon. And the upper section of that, the section that is still without curb and gutter, especially is with that volume of traffic in and out of a neighborhood, given the school traffic that uses that, that street right now, it would potentially create a real problem without some modification to the, to the way the street is currently.
And I did just want to speak very briefly to the, the density issue. So the B2 General Business zoning that's on the subject property today does allow multi-family by right at one dwelling unit for every 1,500 square feet of land area. It's the exact same density for R4. So the, the potential for density doesn't change with the zoning. If anything, it's, it's a little less dense. Now, I do understand, and we've talked, if you like, I can let our city engineer, Steve Bartlett, speak to that, about the traffic capacity and current volumes and the future potential.
My concern is not the potential density. My concern is the way that portion of the street is right now, currently, versus the, the density of traffic that would exist. I, I would have to assume that something significant is going to be done to that upper portion of the street. It's not that long a stretch. But bringing it to, just bringing it to the same standard as the lower portion of Martinsville would, I think, alleviate the bulk of the problem.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm going to defer to our city engineer, Steve Bartlett, to talk about that analysis process on how we go about upgrading existing facilities and infrastructure.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Bartlett, Director of Public Works. So to expand on that just a little bit, this is in our, of course, our major corridor planning, and so it's shown to be a major collector. And what that really means to us is that as development occurs, we'll analyze what those new traffic demands are. And yes, there's traffic on there. There's actually some capacity left. But as we see new, remember, this is zoning we're doing now, not development. So as we see exactly what the yields are for, for new zoning, then we'll begin to develop plans to widen and improve those streets accordingly to meet our thoroughfare plan. So it's, that's our responsibility to do at this point.
The, the density numbers that she quoted earlier, are those for the, the curb and gutter portion of Martinsville? Or is that for that entire stretch?
The traffic density?
Yes.
So actually, I ran those numbers based on the 24-foot-wide section open ditch.
Okay, okay.
And again, traffic capacity numbers will surprise you because they're very large, because they figure very few seconds between cars at a given speed limit, and this is posted 20 out there. And so that's kind of where those numbers come from. So they're larger than, than you might think from a practical standpoint. Doesn't mean it's necessarily always comfortable, but when we look at actual capacity, it's like a pipe. We're going to tell you what it is flowing full. So what we're really here to tell you is to assure you is that although this is zoning, and we can only right now look at what's the maximum use under this particular zoning. And what Elena has told you is that when we switch to R4, we're actually going to lower our density requirements, which will just... which will just help not exacerbate that traffic as much.
Trigger, yeah, trigger.
So, but no, what our promise is to you is things develop, and we look at it, then we'll begin analysis and studies and warrants, and we'll work on widening. We, we're going to have to acquire right-of-way because we can't even find right-of-way for that old piece. We suspect it's just prescriptive, which is from margin of road to margin of road, which is barely outside that asphalt. So yeah, there will have to be.
And the developer's willing to contribute to the process.
So the developer, yes, and there's a process we have to go through. It's, we can't do a taking, or we won't do a taking for that, but it'll be a process between us that we'll, we'll acquire it on their side. But we would have to also acquire it on the other side to do that. So yes, I think that, that's in our future. And, you know, so again, our promise is that we'll monitor the streets and volumes, and we want it to be safe, and we don't want this to be overloaded by any development. And so it's, it's the next step in the process.
Yeah.
So are you saying, excuse me, I mean, are you saying that would be done after the development? It's not starting now?
So I'm saying we don't actually know what the development is now. There's been, there's no plan submitted, no actual traffic volumes, no studies, no nothing. So I can't speculate exactly what that impact would be, ju, just to be silly. If we, if we had one duplex going in, we probably wouldn't consider it a significant load to, to address spending whatever, a million dollars on the street, or whatever the cost is. So that's what we would like to have time to ve, to see what the development actually yields, what the traffic studies are.
Another question I had related to traffic. Is, is Martinsville going to be the only proposed point of ingress and egress for this development?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
So all of the traffic load would be.
Would be on Martinsville, yes. That's correct. That's correct.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I still have concerns about safety up there, but.
Uh, Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bartlett, did I just hear you say that no plan had been submitted so far?
Correct. This is just a zoning change discussion. So we've had early discussions about what they would think conceptually, what they'd like to do. But correct, they're, they're not in the phase where they're actually coming for development plans of review at this point.
Okay. So I find that problematic. I mean, I understand that, you know, I, I sort of understand that timeline, but at the same time, if we're talking about traffic impact, and if that has, that has on a, an effect on, on whether the zoning change is approved, or it's an issue in this discussion, and particularly if it's an issue with the person, you know, with the people who've spoken against it, then I find a, I find a problem with that. I, I guess, I understand the point of not coming up with a full development plan if you don't even know if you're going to get the zoning change, but with this, this sounds sort of like speculation at this point, which I'm also not okay with approving if we don't really have anything concrete. Does that make sense? I mean, am I missing something here?
Well, Councilwoman, and I understand exactly what you're saying. Realize at the point of a zoning change, all we can practically do is look at what the maximums would be for that particular zoning. So for a B2, we can figure the maximum density and traffic. For a R4, the same thing. And so the numbers that we helped generate for Elena to look at, the 3,600, I think, vehicles a day, were based on a maximum practical capacity for, for the, for the property. So we don't honestly, we don't honestly know that. So what, what we're saying is we'll refine those numbers, and that will better define what improvements we need to make, and when, and how. So I understand you're not comfortable, but at this point, well, it's a, it's a land use change, and anything that's allowed by right under that land use in R4, it could be. So it could be, the plans could change, and this could be a apartment complex, and, and anything under an R4. So we have to think that way. And so we're telling you that even at that point, it's only about 3,600 vehicles a day would be our max. So we would plan on that basis until we, till we know more, if that makes sense.
That, thank you. That's really helpful. And that would be the maximum number, so it's either going to be that or lower.
Correct. And, and again, they're early discussions, and they were simply discussions, are certainly for a much lower density and much less traffic alternative there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you.
And then this question, this next question that I have is for our city planner, Elena. So could you explain to me again, the, you said the B2 allows for the multifamily anyways. And so the developer would be able to develop, to, to put, say, an apartment complex on there. And so could you please, again, sort of in a nutshell, explain what, what the, why the zone change request then to R4?
Yes. So the B2 general business zoning district, which is the current zoning of the property today, allows by right the development of multifamily structures, in addition to all those commercial uses that are included in that district. Now, when we talk about multifamily, the zoning ordinance has a very specific definition for what multifamily is. And it defines it as a single structure that has at least three or more dwelling units. So think of like a triplex or, or above. It does not allow for other residential structure types, like duplexes and single-family dwelling structures like the R4. The R4 allows for multifamily, but it also allows for, for duplexes and single-family as well. And you can have like a combination of those, all in the same development. And so the, the developer specifically wants to develop duplexes on the property, and so the current zoning wouldn't allow for duplex. They would have to build like a triplex or above. So that's why they're requesting the, the zone change. They can build something a little less dense than what's permitted by right there today.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Two, a couple more things, maybe not two. Did you, you said that there were only three planning and zoning board members present at the meeting who voted on this?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Were there recusals or anything, or they just, there were other members who weren't there?
We just had two absent members. So there were only three members physically present at the meeting, and so that three to zero was a unanimous vote. We didn't have anyone who, who had to step down or recuse themselves or anything like that.
Okay. I heard Ms. Deborah say that they're, they're the only house in the area. Is that, is that right? Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. So when you, whenever you look at the map, the property along the south side of Martinsville Street is almost entirely made up of multifamily development, except for the property at the hard corner of Martinsville and Park Street. And then their house is kind of, it's right in the middle of Martinsville Street on the south side. It's like, it's a standalone home. Everything else around it is, is multifamily development.
Okay. So I guess where my brain is, is that I take very seriously the residents' opposition to, to this, and their concerns about the traffic and the, and the road. I'm wondering, though, we're not talking about, right now, we're not talking about a zone change from an R2 to an R4. We're talking about a zone change from a B2 to an R4. So presumably, I mean, it's not like we're talking about no development versus, does that make sense, versus, versus a ton of development? And so my question is, and you might not know this, and that's fine, and it could also be speculative, but do you have any idea, did the developer give any indication about, okay, well, if this zone change doesn't go through, then it's, then I'll just do the triplexes, or then I'll just do the apartment complex? I, I'm, I'm just trying to weigh the, the, you know, the, the homeowner's concerns with sort of the developer's intentions and see, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, based on the conversations that, that we've had, the intention has always been duplex development. They, they did not specifically indicate that if the zone change wasn't approved, that they would just forego development altogether. We haven't had those conversations. It's just always been, well, it's just always been intended from the very beginning that we want to develop duplex development in, in this area. They have different, you know, project models based on different communities and demand and things like that. So based on their model and their, you know, preliminary assessment of the area, they found that this duplex development was more fitting. So to answer your question, no, they haven't said that they won't develop the property if it's not rezoned. We just simply haven't had that conversation.
Thank you. And last question for you. Is there any difference in any sort of aesthetic, like beautification or green space stuff, like green space requirements between the B2 and, and this R4 that they're requesting?
The detention requirements are the same. So anything, any development that has an impervious surface, which means parking, drive aisles, buildings, over 14,000 square feet is going to kick in onsite detention, regardless of the development type. It's just impervious area, period. Now, for multifamily, the only additional landscaping for multifamily that's different from duplex development is for multifamily, we do have that commercial district street landscaping requirement. And so that's just an example. Now, there are several mature existing trees onsite, and they have specifically noted interest in preserving some of those, just to provide a natural buffer and some, you know, nice scenery, a nice street view of, of the property. They wouldn't necessarily be required to do that. Also, I'd just like to remind Council that we do have Nick Gallin and Charlie on the call, who are the representatives of the developer. If you guys want to ask any specific questions of them in regards to their intentions, or about, you know, if this zone change doesn't get approved, if they'll continue with the development process, some questions that I might not be able to, to answer for you.
Can we kick those over to you, Charlie or Nick?
Sure. This is Nick Gallin with Aspen Heights. Thank you for your time, everyone. Yeah, we're, we are solely focused on the cottage product, the duplex product. And if the zoning didn't work out, we, we would not be switching over to a, a higher-density multifamily product. This is what we're, we're underwriting, and it, it works here. And that's, that's, that's how we see this, this deal working and penciling. So it is, we're, we're very committed to the, the cottage product at this time.
You have anything else?
Was somebody else going to say something? Yeah, it looked like somebody else was going to say something.
No, I just wanted to know if you, did you have another follow-up question for him, or?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, the, the other question that, that Elena punted to you guys after explaining the, the differences in the green space requirements and the retention and those kinds of things is, I, I would like to hear if you know of, of your plans for, you know, keeping some of those trees and that kind of stuff.
Sure. It's a good, great question. Right now, our, our draft site plan shows us pulled back from Martinsville. There's a lot of topo. If you've been out there, I'm sure you know. There's a lot of topo from Martinsville that kind of drops down into the site, and that makes it, you know, difficult to build on. So we're, we pull back to avoid that, but we get the added benefit of having a nice, a nice tree buffer. And that's actually something that we really like about the site, and we think that will play well into the, the cottage product. It's going to be very insulated. And once you get down in there, you're going to feel like you're, you know, you're, you're separated from the city, and you're kind of in this, you know, forest setting, and we really, we really like it. So that's, that's something that we've, you know, it started off as necessity, but we've, the more we look at it, the, the more we think it's an amenity.
Oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm done, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Amelia. Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. When I first looked at this, my first concern was safety. I do know that the traffic situation on Martinsville, I was surprised that it was going to, it's looked as a future collector. Unless there's a lot of work to be done on Martinsville Street, I'm surprised that it's been labeled as a future collector. I do know that there's a lot of traffic coming from Tower Street, the city housing, even East Highway 7 coming to Walmart. It is a heavy-travelled street. In my opinion, any more traffic added to that, to, basically to me, an unsafe situation. I mean, the steep grades, it is, I don't think ADA approved as far as sidewalks, et cetera. And maybe you could answer that question for me.
Yeah. I will provide a brief explanation, and I'm going to let our expert, city engineer, Steve Bartlett, go into detail. But yes, there are slope requirements for ADA. Whenever you have a dramatic slope, normally you have to, you know, include that in your design. It takes up more, more space because you have to kind of work it back and forth and create platforms. But I will let Mr. Steve Bartlett go into more detail about that.
Thank you, Elena. Steve Bartlett again. And she did use the word expert. I want that in the record, just for fun. So Councilman Bolden, so you're correct, there's some pretty significant grades there. And in fact, we've worked with the apartment complex and Independence Manor, who also kind of cuts through and uses that to look at accessible sidewalks. And one reason we haven't moved forward with sidewalks along that section, along the wider curb and gutter section, is because of those slopes. So now, as far as regulatory requirements, if a sidewalk is put adjacent to a street, it can follow the street grade and still be considered legal. So even though it is steeper than what you consider for normal Texas accessibility standards or ADA, they allow that variance. And we have them here along City Hall. We have some steep sidewalks that, you know, that, that technically meet. So we're not sure that's necessarily a recommendation at, at all times to put sidewalks on steep streets, but, but, but it is a concern, and it's a concern for us. It's one reason we have not addressed putting sidewalks there in the future. We felt that it would invite pedestrian traffic, especially those that may be mobility impaired in, in an area where it might put them at risk. And so that's one reason we really haven't considered it. Did, did that kind of answer your question?
Right. But you, you know, there is going to be sidewalk streets, sidewalks added to the street, Park Avenue, right? And I think like from Tower Street to University?
Uh, yes.
Or Tower to Martinsville.
From, from Tower Street all the way to University.
And University. And, and so that brings into play boys and girls' clubs and the junior high school.
Correct.
Right. So, and that would also give traffic, even pedestrian traffic through Martinsville, even to Walmart could be possible.
Agreed. And I'm not saying that sidewalks aren't, aren't a candidate. It was an area that we were cautious about in the past. So, and I think you're right. Now, we'll have connectivity, actually on two sides, University and on Park Street side. And so it'll probably prompt the need to reevaluate that, absolutely. I think the foot traffic is going to be there whether we give them a sidewalk or not.
Exactly.
So agreed. So this may well be time to readdress that.
Is there going to be a drainage issue if a new, whatever type of complex is built in that property for existing property owners?
So under our ordinances, if they're, and they are significantly over the threshold, where they'll have to do onsite detention. So the theory of that is the receiving properties or streams outside them are blind to their development. In other words, they don't see any more water in a gallons-per-minute way of thinking than they saw before the development, and that's stored on and slowly released. So to simply answer your question is, yes, they will generate more water, and then they will be required to hold and detain that and release it at a rate that should, you know, should be existing conditions.
Is, I think we're moving a lot of dirt in this project.
It's, it's, and we've kind of had early discussions with them, Elena and I have, and then they're aware of the topographic challenges that are on this property. So there's got to be some creative design done, and you're right, there's probably a lot of earthwork on this property.
And the, the water pressure is good for that area?
Yes. Now, we haven't done fire flow tests, because that was something, again, we're not in design development yet. But we would do, one of the things that we need to see is not just do we have an adequate water line, but can we meet any fire flow needs that they have? And in this case, since they're duplexes, they won't be sprinkled buildings necessarily, but we want to meet. So that's kind of the next step. But we do have an adequately large-size water line there to serve them domestically. As far as what pressure they'll generate down in there, I don't honestly know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. Thanks. So I had a question about the body of water that is on the property. Is it a natural spring, or is it, and will it be retained?
Mayor, I don't know if it's spring-fed. It stays full a lot that I can remember, so I suspect that's the case. There's a lot of springs in that area with those, all that topography and hills. So at this point, we haven't, they haven't really shown us what their plans are for, for that particular feature. You know, if you're going to use bodies of water in a developed circumstance, I mean, a good old farm ponds that we have are, are natural little ponds, they have to have significant improvements, hard edges, aeration to maintain an ecosystem. I mean, there's a lot of things if you really want to use them in a developed environment. And whether they're going to make that part of their plan or not, I think, is something yet to be established by them.
Okay. So I can speak to the dangers of that street. About eight weeks ago, I had a, I called in a 911 because a car just flipped over right in front of me on that street, and I've witnessed another wreck also. However, having said that, that is not what we are here to do. We are here to, that is on, on us later about enlarging that street. We are here to, that is on us later about enlarging that street. I believe also it's in the plans for NISD for the junior high, will turn into an elementary school. So that's going to be a different traffic situation also. But as I said, we are here to look at the zoning change only and I think it's a great idea. We need, we need more places to live, we need more investment in our city. And so at the end of the day, we can enforce 20 miles an hour. I mean, we can work on doing that, to mitigate that until the day comes where we can build out that, that road into what it needs to be for safety.
And agreed, Mayor, I think it's just a capital project that needs to be addressed and that's really what we're saying.
Absolutely. Do you have any other questions, Jay? Did you?
No.
Is that, okay. Anyone else? Any other discussion or questions? Elena, you have anything to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So, Chair is ready to entertain a motion.
Let me make a motion, we pass Agenda Item 7B as it's written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we approve Agenda Item 7B as it's written. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item C, consider approval of the purchase of two used fire engines from Sid and Smarton Emergency Group in the amount of $220,000. And I know you love buying new fire, or, well, now you love buying used fire engines, don't you, Keith? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. I'm Keith Kiplinger, your Fire Chief, and I'm happy, especially tonight, that I'm not following Brian Bray and his lovely Parks discussion and I'm not having to bring a lot of doom and gloom to council. So this is an exciting topic. This year, we budgeted $200,000 to refurbish a fire engine that was acquired in 2002. We did that because it's about a third of the price of a brand-new truck and we thought we could extract a fair amount of life out of that, out of that fire engine. We went out and looked, looked at people that do that, that refurbish fire trucks, and we got three bids in. My apparatus committee, I know you think that I just go out and design all the fire trucks and I do all of this, well, I'm not really the expert at that, but I have a team of people that are. And they went out and took a look and got three bids and they all were over budget. And when we were looking at spending 70, 60, 70, 80,000 more than the budget and we were rapidly approaching the 50% of the value of the truck, it no longer made good fiscal sense. So I would like to just tell you that the firefighters on that apparatus committee, and three of them are here, Chief Brown and Captains Anthony and Chandler, they came into my office and said, would you think about buying a used fire truck? And I said, well, I don't really like the idea, but I'll listen. And so they researched available fire apparatus. They found a pair of fire engines in Cy Fair in the Houston area that we could purchase for less than the price of refurbishing ours. And so we did a formal request for proposal from all the people that sell used fire trucks for two matching fire engines. We had the bid opening on March 10th. We received one proposal, which was for those two Cy Fair trucks that they had identified, at $110,000 each for a total of $220,000, which was significantly less than refurbishing that 2002 model. These 2007 model fire engines are bigger and better than the ones that we buy. Cy Fair has a different tax base and so they have between 90 and 130,000 miles, which is significantly less than the mileage that we put on a fire truck. They carry 750 gallons of water, they have bigger pumps than we traditionally buy, they have the generators and light towers and compressed air foam, so really all the bells and whistles. So why is Cy Fair getting rid of them? Is there something wrong with them? And the answer to that is no, they're on a very aggressive vehicle replacement program. Generally 12 to 13 years, they replace their fleet. And so they're well-maintained, they have 12, 13 fire stations and 12 mechanics that work for the fire department. We know the fleet history on them, we've spoken with the command staff and we've actually, our firefighters have gone down and spoken with the firefighters that use the trucks, who say they're an excellent value and they're just being traded in on two new trucks. So our proposal is that we, that we purchase these, which will be placed in our reserve fleet. And I've got a picture of the trucks that we're asking to replace. Actually, no, I don't know how that slide got there. Sorry. Oops. So we're going to replace a 1989 model fire truck that was built by FMC, who went out of business about six months after we bought it. We want to get rid of a 1993 Boardman fire engine, which went out of business about six months after we purchased it. Those two items make requiring parts a little challenging. And then a 1997 Pierce fire engine that's on a commercial cab. So if you look at the picture of what we're proposing versus the picture of what we're getting rid of, we're going to be able to much more effectively serve our community and do it with one less fire engine. So we recommend approval, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there anyone here that has a comment they'd like to make? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, let's start with Mr. Anderson.
I don't have any particular questions, I'm glad that you got to come to us with a fun subject tonight, though, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations for that.
Ms. Fisher?
Good thing you got all those smart people working for you, huh?
Yes, ma'am, they make me look good on a daily basis.
I got nothing, Chief, this looks exciting.
Yeah, Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Chief. Cy Fair is, they have all the money in the world, they can rotate their stock every year if they want to. Good idea, thank you.
And Mr. Hand?
How regularly could we buy, replace vehicles like that for 20% of the new, the new cost? I mean, they're about a half million for that general truck, right?
So that truck in today's dollars, those trucks that we're looking at are probably $900,000 trucks. And so, so that's, that's one of the challenges, is that fire apparatus lose value very quickly. And when you're purchasing used fire apparatus, there are two reasons that generally people sell them. One is they've gotten all of the use out of them and the reliability is gone. Or number two, they were a lemon. And so these just happen to be right in the 13-year-old kind of range. We know where they came from, we know that they weren't lemons. And so there's sort of a sweet spot, but you've got to buy a 12, 13, 14, 15-year-old truck. If somebody puts a six-year-old fire engine on the market, there's a reason. And so we want to be really careful. I never thought I would be coming to you with a proposal to buy a used fire engine because often you inherit someone else's challenges. A fire engine is not like a car or pickup. It's a very complicated, it's like building a house when you design one. And so we just happen to have really smart people that happen to find the right deal at the right time. And then they negotiated with these people to, they're going to take them into the shop and we're going to go through them from one end to the other and I feel really good about it.
So if these go well, is there, is there an opportunity we just snuggle up next to Cypress and?
I'd really rather.
It seems like there's an amazing opportunity.
It does, I really like the idea of buying new things, but certainly we will consider this moving into the future as we, as we look at those purchases. This just happened to be a great opportunity for us.
We could replace all your 1930s ones you showed us there, too. Awesome, thank you.
Okay. If no further discussion, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve Agenda Item 7C as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, we approve Agenda Item C as written. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say yes or aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So now we got to move the money to pay for it, right? Agenda Item D, go right ahead.
Mayor and Council, Keith Kiplinger, your Fire Chief once again. In order to facilitate the purchase of these two fire engines, we need to add $50,000 from our equipment replacement fund into the general fund and that's what this budget amendment ordinance before you will do.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions about that? If not, Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Agenda Item 7D as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we approve Agenda Item 7D as written. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Agenda Item E, you go right ahead.
Mayor and Council, Keith Kiplinger, your Fire Chief. I would like to talk tonight about, discuss, an interlocal agreement, a potential for an interlocal agreement to support our COVID vaccine plans through the summer. At this point, 20% of our population in Nacogdoches County over the age of 16 have been vaccinated with at least one dose. We look for this vaccination program to continue on through the summer. Right now, we're in the phase where we're able to move 1,600 people a day through the civic center and can very efficiently vaccinate people. But as we move forward in this process, it's going to be more cumbersome and we won't be 1,600 people a day. It may be 25 shots after church on Sunday or 100 shots during the week. And so in order to be able to do this, our firefighters and nursing students have been giving shots for several months now, as you all know. We're going to continue to do that, but in order to do that, we have to incentivize the students staying through the summer and not going back to Dallas or Houston. We look to use them as well to do some public outreach and that's another piece of this plan. So I kind of want to just go over the plan and answer any questions you might have and get your feedback on moving forward with this interlocal agreement that we would, we would propose to bring back to you at the first meeting in April. Our proposal is to, is to have SFA hire 12 nursing students as student workers to retain nursing faculty appropriate to supervise them, two social work students to outreach into, into the community, and one Spanish-language student to help us with interpretation, to help us with documents, to help us at the clinic sites with our Spanish-language families. And so we would keep 15 SFA students here. SFA would hire them as student workers, we would pay SFA the cost plus their overhead costs, which is 15%. And our plan would be that we would seek reimbursement from FEMA under the disaster declaration for COVID-19. And so part of this is this outreach piece, we're working with the School of Social Work at SFA, who has agreed to supervise the two social work students and really try to get some data and identify local trends and national trends and try to determine what works and what doesn't work. We've already applied for a grant and have already been kind of approved, I guess, for a local grant, to do some media outreach and to try to look at how can we target populations of people over 70? How do we target populations of, of parents with kids? How do we? So we're trying to really break that down and identify what are the best ways for us to, to send that messaging. One of the real challenges with COVID-19 and the COVID vaccines is equal access to information about the vaccines. I don't, don't recommend that everybody take a vaccine, I don't, I'm not pushing anybody to take a vaccine, but I want everybody to have the information they need to make an informed choice for themselves and their families. And right now, that sometimes is a little bit difficult to get when you Google it or you just watch the news media. So I think at a local level, we can have trusted faces that tell truthful information and let people make their own informed decisions based on that. This contract would go through July 31st and then potentially could be extended beyond that, depending on the need to continue vaccinations into, you know, through the summer.
Is there anyone here that has anything they would like to, to say about this idea? No, all of your firemen are being very quiet. You've all been working on, on all of this for quite a while now. So Counsel, let's start with Mr. Bolden. Any questions or advice or?
No, just one, one question. You mentioned a couple of times, keep them here. That's students from out of town?
So, so we know that some of the students live in Nacogdoches and some of them would normally go home over summer break and we know that we're going to try to keep 12 nursing students the summer between their junior and senior year. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were, they've been volunteering their time and using clinical hours and so this is actually going to be a way for them to help fund their senior year of college. And I think that's a, that's a, that's a dub, that's not the reason we're doing it, but it's certainly an added bonus for them to have a manner, a way to finish out schooling. And maybe they fall in love with Nacogdoches for real and just decide to stay here, right?
Right, yeah. Now, I would just ask, like, surely we could have, you know, have 12 students from Nacogdoches?
So I.
Yeah, the way I was listening to it, and don't matter, don't pay that any attention, is that we were just going to keep 12 students from out of town.
No, 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 it's not 12 students from out of town, we're going to let the School of Nursing make that determination and, and it may not be 12 students, it's going to be 12 students available to us every week. And so it may be 24 students and they split the summer in half.
Okay.
We're going to let the School of Nursing make that determination and SFA is actually going to be the hiring agent. We're just contracting with them to provide the workforce.
It won't be by name student. Okay, thank you. Good plan, by the way.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
This is great, I'm really excited about it. I think it's yet another example of how it seems like the city is doing a really great job of finding where we can collaborate with SFA and where, you know, we can have and establish and strengthen this mutually beneficial relationship. And so I think it's a brilliant idea and I'm, I'm really excited to see how it develops further.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay. Mr. Hands?
Nothing outside of, it looks great, I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Same, same here, I absolutely love the whole idea and it is a great, great additional way that the city can partner with SFA, so I like it all the way around.
So we'll be back in April with the legal documents, the interlocal agreement and possibly or most likely an interlocal agreement between the city and the county, so that we can bill them if we do work outside the city limits and that, they can seek reimbursement from FEMA to cover those costs. So we'll be able to fully capitalize our costs and, and not run up a big bill.
That sounds great. Stay right where you are. And Item F, receive a report and host a discussion regarding the fire station location study.
We're going to endeavor to move this question. Pretty sure this board came from the Parks Department because we would have something much more sturdy at fire.
What did you do?
So several months ago, we asked Council to engage Mike Peach, a professional engineer in the state of Texas and an ISO expert, to take a look at our fire station locations and our staffing model. And so tonight, I kind of want to just walk through that report, you've all been provided a copy of that full report, but I think that we can walk through it and it will be a little easier to understand what his recommendations are and then what steps you may or may not want to take moving forward. So just as a point of review, we have five fire stations now, one located on North Street, one on East Main at MLK, one on Southwest Sawings Drive at Old Lefkin Road, one out by the high school and one about four doors down on Pillar Street. And so that's where they're located throughout the community. Those stations all have some challenges. Station 1 is at the busiest intersection in the city. It was built in 1953 and added on to in the 70s. The condition of the station is pretty poor. It's a 53-model building and it's, it's just, it's outlived its, it's outlived its useful life as far as the condition. And the size of the station is really challenging as well. The day room, sleeping quarters and the facilities for the employees were built in a different era, in a different age. And so that station has some real challenges. Station 2 is located too close to Fire Station 5, they're, they're very close together. It was built in 1953 as well. That station, again, it's a 1953 model fire station that's had no major renovations. And the size of the station is very, very tiny. That station is very small, the engine rooms are very small and the living areas in that station are very small. Fire Station 3 at Old Lefkin Road in the Loop is challenged now because of the flyover location. So as the, as the direct connect for I-69 is right now coming across, that's creating a challenging situation primarily with the Oaks neighborhood on Old Lefkin Road because we're not going to have as direct an access there. So the firefighters will have to leave there, go all the way to Highway 7 and then come back around to efficiently serve that south end of the South Street and then that neighborhood. Station 4 is, is a good station, it was built in the 80s, it's our newest station. It needs some renovations and it needs to be upgraded with regard to size. And so again, it's not had any major renovations since the 80s. Fire Station 5 is our oldest station, it was built in 1952 on the site of the original 1909 station. The location, again, it's really close to Station 2. It's also a little bit of a challenging location while it's being in the downtown district. However, that's a charming characteristic that it has as well and we certainly recognize that. The condition of the station, it needs pretty dramatic, a pretty dramatic investment in, in order to keep it functioning as a fire station into the future. And the size of the station, the size of the station, there's plenty of square feet in the building, but the way the square feet are allocated just don't function and don't work anymore. It's really tight. So let's talk about Insurance Services Office and the Fire Protection Rating Schedule, which is just a dynamic topic that I know everyone is excited about. Insurance ratings are largely based on fire station locations. Now, they're not just based on that, they're based on water supply, commuting. Insurance ratings are largely based on fire station locations, now they're not just based on that, they're based on water supply, communications, training. Firefighter qualifications, staffing, but a big piece of that is fire station locations. Fire engines are optimally within one and a half road miles of all buildings. And ladder trucks are optimally within two and a half road miles of all buildings. That's sort of what the insurance industry wants. Now we need to think about a couple of things, I'm sorry, I think I jumped ahead. Insurance ratings are based on those fire station locations. Got a slide that jumped out of the, jumped out of the way. Response times and districts don't always match the ISO locations, and I think that's really important to note. So if you live on Colonial Drive, you are closer to Fire Station number one on North Street. But your fire station that responds to you is Fire Station number four out by the high school. Well, why is that? I could go a mile and a half in a shorter period of time on Appleby Sand Road than I can going through the intersection at North at Austin. The intersection at Austin and University. Now the intersection, I'm sorry, at Brigade in Austin. And so the Fire Station 4 actually has a quicker response time, even though they're, they're a little further away by road miles. And so our response districts and our ISO station locations don't always match, and that's okay, ISO is looking at one metric. And then we're looking at what actually works and what makes the most sense. Fire Station 1 is a little bit closer to, to Medical Center Hospital, but Station 4 can get there more quickly because it's hard to get up North Street. And so our response districts are based on those, those response criterion. Current stations were built as much as 70 years ago when the city looked much differently. The North City Limits of Nacogdoches was at Austin Street when Station 1 was built. And I think that's just something important to, to, to pay attention to. It's also important to note that we're, we're providing a really high level of service and we're, we're not, this, this is not. Hey, tomorrow, we need to do something or we're not going to be able to respond effectively and efficiently. Our model has morphed and changed and those response districts have changed as the community's grown. But we're still effectively and efficiently responding to those calls. And what we're doing here is really just taking a look at, a lot has changed in the last 70 years. And looking forward to the next 40, 50, 60, 70 years, are there some changes that we can start planning for now? Or is there some things we need to think about? And if, if the answer is, is no, we don't want to make any changes, that's okay, we just need to invest in the buildings that we have. And, and that's a decision that locally we need to make, our consultant is not making that decision for us. He's just making recommendations based on the insurance standards, and I want to be really clear on that. So the analysis, we asked him to take a look at the effect of reducing fire stations from five to four. When Fire Station 4 was opened in the 80s, it's my understanding that we didn't add any personnel or any vehicles. And so we just took the people that we had and spread them out thinner. Most days, there is at least one fire station that has two people working at it. And I could tell you that two people are not enough for a car fire, two people are not enough to initially be at a house fire. Two people can effectively, generally effectively handle a medical call if it's not too serious. But that's a real, that's a real concern of mine. Every night when I go to bed, my biggest concern is that, that because of that, our firefighters aren't as safe as they really should be. And optimally, we would want to see three or four firefighters on every truck, every time. Because firefighting is a team sport, everything that we do is a team sport, much like basketball and, and the team with five players on the court. Beats the team with three players almost every time. And so we're much more effective and efficient when we're working together as a team. We wanted to take a look at the implications on staffing and what would going from five to four stations do? As far as allowing us to always keep three people on a fire engine every single day. And then what would be the ideal location for those stations if, if that was even a possibility, even if, if we're. Geographically, could we make four stations and if so, where would they be in a general sense? And so the study, the studies report, currently, we have five stations, our minimum staffing is 13 people per day. And we currently staff four engines and one ladder truck. The ISO study recommends four stations. With a minimum staffing of 16 people on the same number of trucks, four engines and one ladder truck. And that would allow three across staffing and then one battalion chief. In the future, the ISO study recommends another station out on the West Loop, a fifth station be added back down the road. With 22 people as minimum staffing with five engines and two trucks, so we would have. We would just add another engine and another ladder truck on the other side of town. So taking a look at. Taking a look at the proposed map that you have in front of you. And this, again, this is the consultant's proposal, this is not, this is not a staff proposal, we simply took what the consultant said. If you take a look, the color blocked areas are the current ISO mileage limits. And so the areas that are, that are the dark shaded in colors, that's the ISO one and a half mile limits. The sort of polygons that look like they're almost hand drawn are the proposed station limits, and so you can see what the impact would be. So the easiest way to do this is go to the green and if you will go out to Highway 21 East going outside, you see that we go currently one and a half miles from Station 2. Is just a little bit past the East Loop. The effect of combining two stations, Station 5 and Station 2, somewhere in the vicinity of University and Maine. Would be pulling that back in where the blue, the heavy blue line goes. Is everybody able to sort of follow along, this is a really complicated subject and, and our GIS guys did an amazing job of making it visual. But I want to make sure that you can see where those, where those changes are and where, where turning two fire stations into one would, would really pull us back in a couple of areas. But the other thing to think about is that once you're on the road and moving, they really doesn't have a significant impact on response time. The, the, the significant impact on response time is processing the call and getting out the door of the fire station. And the first, the first mile is the, is the longest mile. The last mile is the easiest, so, so once you are, once you are out at Highway 21, three blocks from the Loop. Getting to the Loop isn't any more time, it's, it's just, you're talking about seconds at that point. The biggest positive impact, as you can see, is in the blue color block area with the red line around it, and that would be relocating Fire Station 3. From Old Lufkin Road in the Loop to somewhere in the vicinity of Highway 7 in the Loop. And what you see is currently the blue, you can see that's how far we go with the flyover in place, which is coming in days, not years. And then you would see the effect that the red line shows you how much better that positioning would be down the road. Just above that is the proposed, kind of proposed future fire station. You'll notice that there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of streets in there currently. And so that would be a, a down the road as we develop the I-69 corridor. And as that largely undeveloped part of our community develops, then we would need to think about. That's probably where Fire Station 5 is going to go somewhere out on that West Loop. The Fire Station 1 District, the proposal was to move it several blocks or about a half mile north of its current location. To a suitable location. And what that does is allows us to pick up Medical Center Hospital and a couple of nursing homes within their one and a half mile range. Along with Oakview Drive and, and the apartments on Northway. And so that has a pretty significant impact. At Station 4, the proposal is to leave it exactly where it is and not make any changes and so. So again, you, you have that representation. You can see the areas where there are, there are blocked out, there are little sections and I want to take your, your eyes really to Colonial Hills and that's the, the perfect subdivision to show you as an example. If you look at the red color block, we go well east of Colonial Drive. In the one and a half mile response district from Station 1, as you can see. Fire Station, if we moved Station 1, you will see that that would be in an open area, it would kind of be in a, in a no man's land. So what I'd like to do is, is take you to, I've lost some slides here, Jan. So what I'll tell you is that that no man's land is all currently today in Station 4's response district. So it's not really leaving a no man's land, it's simply moving those stations a little further apart and, and it's creating a. It's creating nothing, it's changing nothing because Station 4 is still going to respond there like they are today. That's the case in many of these, so our options at this point, our options at this point, or your options at this point. And I'll just walk through them, the first option is really do nothing, we can just, just keep operating the way we are. And we know that we need to do some renovations of our existing facilities and we need to fund that in order to keep them operating. We can move forward with some of the recommendations, but not all of them. The most impactful from response times and response zones is really moving Fire Station 3 because that flyover is imminent. Then we're left with, with some other choices and some older stations that we can talk about. And then we could, your counsel could decide that at some point you want to move forward with the entire recommendation. If we, if you decided that you wanted to move forward with all or part of this, our next steps would be to identify the priorities. And that would be sort of a management study of, of what's the most important thing to get done first. We would seek a lot of public input. There are a lot of people that will have lots of concerns about moving a fire station. If Fire Station 1 were to move five blocks north of my house, I'm saying north of where it is now, it would be five blocks further away from my house because I live right behind Station 1. And so this does have an impact on the community, but trying to look at the community from a 30,000 foot view. And that's what this study has allowed us to do, is really take a step back and look at this from a really high level. And say, okay, moving forward, this is the direction we want to go. Or hey, we really want to stay where we are. And I think that's, all of those are, all of those are fair answers, I think all of them are okay answers. But we'd want to seek a lot of public input, we'd need to identify some potential sites. Identify our needs and, and do some cost estimating and then try to identify funding sources. And so what I thought was that this evening, we could possibly just have a conversation about your thoughts about the study. Your thoughts about Fire Station Locations where they are now. And give staff a little bit of direction on what do you want us focusing our energies on or not focusing our energies on? And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this before we move forward? Ms. Fisher, you want to start us off?
Oh, you put me on the spot, um, yes, I'll start us off. So, um, thank you, Chief, for that, I have, I have a couple of questions. First of all, so it, say we were to say, well, let's adopt the whole plan. We are talking about building totally from scratch new buildings, right?
So we would build, so, so if we were to, to enter into a project to try to move forward with all the recommendations, we would be. Building three new buildings and then renovating Station 4 and adding on.
Okay, what would happen to the other, to the old buildings?
What would you like to happen to the old buildings? So, so I mean, I, I see that North, North at Austin is, is really the busiest intersection in our community. Certainly the biggest one that, that community members go through on a daily basis. And so that's a pretty, that's a pretty dynamic corner that I, that I could see somebody having a real interest in, in acquiring at some point. The downtown fire station is a neat old historic building from 1952. It's really small, the fire trucks barely fit in there, we can keep ordering them with smaller wheels and tires. Or we could try to, you know, we can step back and take a look at what would that look like for us to do some massive renovations of that building to try to. Open up more space to park fire trucks and, and so as far as what we do with the old buildings, I think that's, I think all of this is just. Again, 30,000 feet, let's just take a big look at the community and where you think we're headed and then we'll come back and fill in those blanks down the road.
Okay, um, we're talking about a major investment in, in public safety here in Nacogdoches and. I, I like what you said about seeking pu- public input. My thought and comment on that would be. I wonder if there's a way we can seek public input. Before deciding what plan we're going with, so I, I don't know if this was intentional or if I misunderstood you, but it sounded like. Okay, we decide one, two and three, and then we seek public input. And, and my vote would be to reverse that. You know, instead of, instead of having a plan and then asking the public how they feel about it, flipping that. What are your thoughts on that?
So, so my thoughts are tonight to get your, kind of your guidance and your feedback. And if you want me to just put this on a shelf and forget about it, then, then, then I'm good with doing that. If you want us to move forward, then my, my next step would be to take a, a management look. To analyze the recommendations and see what would that actually look like and then begin that public input process. So it would not be, let's, let's, let's decide to move forward, I, I think that we would be getting the cart ahead of the horse.
Awesome, great. And then the last thing, I know that you're asking us what we think about this, but, and you also, you were clear that this. These, these suggestions were based on the, the ISO ratings and that, but. You know, you obviously have an intimate knowledge of how our fire stations work and locations and, and. The condition, so what do you think as the fire chief?
So from, from a purely, from a purely, from a purely technical fire chief standpoint. I think that this recommendation is absolutely on track, I think he was off by three blocks. From where I would put fire stations in almost every direction. Just because I know the town and I know the traffic patterns and I know what's growing and what's not growing and where there might be a vacant lot or, or land. But as far as, as far as the right thing, I believe that this is, this is about as close as we're going to get. And again, we brought somebody in from the outside that's going to see the smudge on the wall and that's going to look at it very objectively. I, I worked most of my career when I was on the truck at the downtown fire station and I have a, it has a special place in my heart. The ghosts upstairs are, are friends of mine, we've known each other for a long time and. I like the smells that creep up the stairs every morning when the guys are cooking breakfast and, and so, so, but from a purely technical. I'm your fire chief, what's the right answer? Finding a way to right now without raising the budget a whole lot, putting more people on each truck makes a great deal of sense to me. And then long term, realizing that our community has grown north a lot. And that the flyover is really impacting our ability to serve people on the south end, and so, does that answer your question?
Yes, Chief, thank you so much, and that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Hands.
Do you know off the top of your head how specific insurance underwriters get when they are rating? Like, is it our community is, has an ISO rating because some percentage fits within the 1.5 mile radius? Or is, are they going to look at Colonial Drive as an example and say, with the new proposed locations? And say, those homes are going to have worse ratings by?
So our, so our community, so, so there, the, the answer is both and, so our community has a single rating of an ISO 2. The ISO 1 is the best you can have and we have an ISO 2 which is right on the tail. That, that includes everyone inside the city of Nacogdoches. Now, are there places, is there a potential that down the road you could find yourself with a split rating? And the answer is yes, and so we could have a split rating of a 2 slash 4. And there are some people that we have challenges serving that would be a lower ISO rating. So for example, if you decided tomorrow to go annex the Country Club in Woodland Hills. We would have a split ISO rating and it would be a 2.6 or a 2.5 or a 2.7. And so everybody inside the, the, the current city limits and probably a little bit down 59 South would enjoy the 2. And then we would have a split rating and the places that that, that you see that really is in the bigger cities, so, so you get out by like. Lake Houston Parkway and the city of Houston has an island of land that there's no fire station anywhere near, then that would be a split rating. We don't have any split ratings and there's nothing in this plan that would cause a split rating today.
Got it, okay, that's helpful. On the Station 3, it seems like time restraints, that, that's the biggest pinch point, correct? Because as the flyover comes in, that's going to cause significant congestion and functionality.
The flyover is going right to the front door or the right of way take is, is right to the, right to the front of the, the fire station and so. As that happens, we're going to have to adjust our route, our response routes and try to figure out how to most effectively. Get down there on the south end of town, but it's really that Old Lufkin Road. Community on Old Lufkin Road that is just going to add a mile to our response to get there.
So talk about scrunching in, getting smaller tires, smaller trucks, Mini Coopers or something, huh?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, so we're looking for some used 2007 Mini Coopers in Cy Fair right now.
There you go, that's what I was going with that. Next, as far as paying for those Mini Coopers, the, you mentioned funding sources, so. Is there some sort of a match program or something that I'm not aware of or, or is it, we'd have to come up with that?
So, so for the last 10 years, the answer to that has been no, it's all going to be local funds. With the recent, the recent stimulus package, I think we're yet to find out, so. There, there may be some opportunities there within, within FEMA grants, so, so some of the FEMA programs got funded pretty heavily and. Some USDA programs, and so there may be some opportunities there, I think we're just too early in that to know. And it certainly, that's, that's an avenue we want to go down if that, if that's, if you want to move forward on, on a station or more than one station. And then we can, we can try to find, time that so that we can, we can maximize that potential.
And Dream World, rough ballpark, excluding land acquisition. Square footage and wildly rough cost estimate based on pre-COVID steel and lumber. What would you?
So, so if we consolidate. So, so if we consolidated Fire Station Two and Five, that would be a bigger station because it would just be a bigger station. And so probably somewhere in the, I hate, Mario told me, don't throw out numbers if I don't know numbers. It's two hundred and forty dollars a square foot and the fire stations are going to be somewhere between, uh, eight thousand and eleven thousand, twelve thousand square feet. And so, so the construction price is about two forty a foot to do it the right way. And so, and that's a, again, that's a forty, fifty, sixty year old institutional building. And so somebody watching on TV says, how can it be two hundred and forty dollars a foot? Well, we've lived in them since nineteen fifty-two and, and we need to make sure we're building a building that'll last like that. A hardened building with, with, that has electricity when the power goes out. So the firefighters can, can actually survive during the next winter storm and things like that. So. That, that is a big cost number and, and we, we're going to work really hard with, with our, if we move forward, we'll work really hard with our architect partners to, to look at where are the places we can save money and where are the pace, places we want to invest money for energy efficiency and for hardening of those buildings so that, so that they can survive a tornado, so the firefighters can keep working and things like that. So. That's a, that's a long way down the road, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I look at the proposal and I'd say it's doable. One thing I wouldn't do, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that without asking you, you, your recommendation because I have no idea. But I just have a question about, uh, buffer zones. Is like buffer zone, uh, two buffer?
Yes.
Is there, say, like, designed to say if there's a lot of wood frame homes in, in that buffer area compared to modern built homes as far as how far you, away you would be?
No, no, so there's no, the insurance industry doesn't put any, uh, any part of the calculation on that. What they really look at is hydranted areas. So generally speaking, as we develop a street, fire hydrants show up. And so where you have these big swaths of land that are just white, just wide open, there's no fire hydrants there. So there's no expectation that we put a fire station to serve them. And so they really look at the rooftops in those hydranted areas to make sure. And, and so it's not going to be a hundred percent. Nobody's ever going to have a hundred percent coverage in those buffers. But what you want to do is get that coverage so that it's, it's a very high percentage of those homes.
Was it proposal made, uh, with the thought in mind about growth?
Yes. So if you look at the Station Five proposal, which is the purple, the purple section up there, kind of the purple outline on the west loop, I could see that being Station Five. And then you can pick a number, but I could very easily identify, um, another station in the area of industrial at Highway fifty-nine, depending on growth in toward the Garrison Y. I also could see another station, uh, on the east loop, on the east loop, somewhere south of Star Street to cover if that area began to fill in. And then certainly down on the south side. So you could, if, if we doubled our population, we could have an eight station, eight fire station department. Again, that, that's, that's a really, uh, would be a great thing. I'd love to see seventy thousand people living here. And I'd love for you to need eight fire stations and, and I'd like to fill them all up with used trucks from Cy Fair and, and firefighters. So.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm, I'm not sure I want to jump straight to seventy thousand people, but I, I do like the proposal. And, uh, you know, having grown up here, I, I watched the existing facilities age. The only remotely modern one, number four, I remember when that was built very clearly. So I, uh, I definitely understand the need for relocate, both relocation and modernization of the, the facilities that, that you and, uh, um, your department have to use. And this proposal does seem to take into account at least the, the more immediate, um, growth concern, which would be West Loop, um, as, as I sixty-nine approaches. So I, I really don't have any particular questions at this point. The, the couple that I've had have already been answered. And, uh, overall, I, I'm very much in favor of, of, uh, beginning to get some public input on it honestly and see where that, where that steers it. You know, I, I know from my experience, having lived downtown at one point, I will not be sad to see, um, number five move out of downtown. And also for, for the purposes of, of a future development in the downtown area, I think it would be helpful to have it close, but not in, um, the, the core area of downtown.
So, so, and, and I, I let me address that. So beginning in about eighteen fifty until about nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty, the thought was put fire stations right in the middle of downtown. And if you go look at the major cities that, that have re, that have renovated Houston's and Dallas's, they pulled the fire stations just to the outside of their downtown business district and they respond in instead of being trapped inside and trying to respond out. And so there was a real paradigm shift in the, in the fire service with regard to response times. And so they're trying to cover the entire district. Well, they could still serve the downtown congested area effectively from the periphery. But they couldn't serve the periphery effectively from downtown. And that's largely what happens here, right? They come out and they have to steer and get out on North Street or, or, or head down the bricks. And, and so it's just not quite as effective as it, as it could be.
I'm excited about the idea and I'm, I'm excited to see what the, the community thinks of, of the idea and where, where we go from there.
Great. Uh, before the meeting, I was handed a note that we did have someone that wanted to call in and speak to this. And I, it was my oversight. I neglected to have, uh, Justin give them a call. If you'd go ahead and call Ms. Whitten, please. Thank you. And so I think before we go any further, I'd like to, to do that.
Hello?
Cheryl?
Yes?
Hi, this is Mayor Brophy. How are you this evening?
I'm okay. How are you?
I'm doing fine. I got a note that you, um, had some comments regarding our, uh, fire location study.
Well, I just have questions. I'm a little nervous about downtown Nacogdoches. You're moving that fire station out of downtown and a whole city block burned with the fire station right across the street. And, uh, has me nervous that something incredibly catastrophic could happen downtown. Also, as far as the east side goes, um, I, my husband has lived in the house where we live now. He grew up here and his grandfather was the fire captain at substation number two here on the east side. And that thing runs by our house almost every day. And so where on University are these things going to be located? How much further? How much longer is it going to take them to get out here? One of our houses out here on Seventy East Inside Loop catches fire. Now they're less than five minutes away from me. And so that has me a little concerned. So that is all I have to say about it. There's a whole bunch of houses right down there on Martin Luther King. And also with the city situation, you've got Nebco down there. And that, what hap, I mean, it, 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 it's just, it's a bit scary. Nebco, Long Star, all those places, it worries me. That's all.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. And I appreciate you sharing that with us. And someone from the fire department will call you and, uh, visit with you about this and may, and maybe answer some of those questions for you. Would that be all right?
That's fine. That's fine.
Well, thank you for calling and I hope you have a pleasant rest of the evening.
Okay. Thank you. You as well. Goodbye.
Goodbye. Okay. So before we, um, um, leave this, is there, are there any follow-up questions or any comments? Or is there anything else you need from us? I think you've kind of, you understand, uh, what all we've said this evening. Okay. That sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay. And now we are going to hear, I guess, is Case Offerman here, our Assistant Public Works Director? And, um, yeah, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, um, Case Offerman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Tonight, we're coming to you, asking you to consider approval of a contract with Two Fifteen Consulting for professional engineering services on a couple of storm drain projects that are needed. It'd be the, uh, Summer Hill and Logan's Port drainage improvements that we're, that we're asking about tonight. In the past few months, we've had significant flooding events on, on, uh, both of the, well, in town, but specifically had issues with both of these areas during those events. Summer Hill Circle, uh, not having but one drainage inlet at the very back of the, uh, of the U down there on the west side. And at Logan's Port Street, we have, we've had a failed, uh, storm drain that has caused issues. And we would like to relocate that one. Several engineering firms, uh, have previously submitted their qualifications for this. Two Fifteen has done, uh, several of these types of projects for us, uh, in the past, including some currently. And they, uh, have expertise in water resources, engineering, hydraulics, um, hydrology and, and the, uh, the like. So we've, uh, we've asked them to, um, to come on board for this project. They're, uh, gonna provide the, the first part of the services, topographical surveying, preliminary design schematics and estimates, as well as, uh, final designs and details for bid, for the bidding of this project for a lump sum fee of sixty-two thousand dollars. And also, uh, provide bidding and construction administration services, which includes, um, answering questions during the bid phase and periodic site visits during construction on a time and materials basis, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. So the total maximum authorization for this contract would be eighty-seven thousand dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? None. Uh, council, um, I'm going to, uh, let you know that Amelia Fisher is going to recuse herself from this discussion and the vote. Um, so let's, uh, start with Mr. Hens.
What do we see as the biggest obstacles? I know the, the engineering report hasn't been done yet, but what, is there anything potentially catastrophic that we're looking at where the, the issues are substantially worse than we can foresee? I mean, are, are there, are, are there something in there that we kind of anticipate being more than a typical, uh, revamp of what's currently there?
Uh, well, um, if I understand your question correctly, I would say no. Uh, we understand what the issues are at each location. Summer Hill, like I said, only has one drainage inlet at the west end of the, the, the U Street. What it needs is, um, periodic inlets along the sides of the street, including piping, uh, back around to that outfall, uh, which, um, would be part of a, a normal design effort. And so, uh, we're, we're having to kind of retrofit those solutions onto, onto that street. Logan's Port, uh, has an existing storm drain which has failed. And we're going to, uh, relocate it, upsize it and, um, take care of that, that issue that way.
Perfect. You answered my fumbling question. Just, just trying to think through some of the failed, uh, lines we had right around downtown before. And then the, uh, the bridge and water going under like the Regay area. We're super time sensitive and if we didn't address it, it could be ten times as expensive to fix that. So.
Well, so, yeah, the, uh, it, it, I would call it time sensitive since we've experienced multiple flooding events, um, that have impacted those areas. And so they are needed and things aren't going to get any better until we improve them, obviously. So. Let's just hope we don't have another significant flooding event between now and, and then. But this design will, will last, you know, several months anyway. And then the, the construction wouldn't be until next year most likely anyway. So it, it will take a little bit of time to get these solutions implemented.
Awesome. Thank you, Case.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No particular questions for me.
Mr. Bolden?
Uh, no particular question for me either. I was just surprised that Logan's Port had a drainage issue. And you said not repair, but replace or reroute?
Yes, it, it actually runs under several structures currently and, uh, has failed in certain areas. So to take care of the problem, we're going to get them out from under those structures and, and upsize it.
Cause affected to reroute.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And hopefully prevent any future issues of flooding.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair, when they entertain a motion to consider approval of that?
I'll make a motion. We pass agenda item seven G as it's written.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Uh, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that concludes our meeting of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you all for attending.